The first item on the list is old business, commercial application for solar fields.
Peter, if I may, just since we have a number of members of the public attending for this very application, I probably should just reiterate that I'm recusing myself because I'm a personal friend of the applicants and to avoid the appearance of any kind of bias or other conflict of interest.
Thank you, George, for reminding the audience there. And I would like to take this opportunity to say to those who are present that as with every application, the document that we go by to make our determination when we go through the application process is our ordinance that applies to the application or ordinance says. So in this case, I'll refer you to the Town of Belgrade's Commercial Development Review Ordinance that was last amended on March 17th, 2017. That is our guiding document. I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that fact. And I guess I would also like to take this time to ask if there is, if there are concerns from public who may have opinions for or against this. I'd like to make sure we have some time to address them and hear them out. That's acceptable to everybody here. So I'd like to get a feel from the board, would you like to do that prior to going through the checklist or after going through the checklist?
I don't object either way, but the public probably should be able to speak and maybe first.
I like that approach myself. Pete Sargent, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thanks, because we want to honor the, those who are here taking time out of the busy days to hear through our process. Would anybody who's in attendance like to raise some points that we should consider relative to the application specifically as it pertains to the Commercial Development Review Ordinance?
Yes, we, my name is Stephanie Sawyer, and this is my husband Kevin Main. And I also want to note that my dad Terry Sawyer is also joining us and he is also a budding landowner. And you'll see that, that's why my name is on the screen, Stephanie Sawyer Main is using my computer so we could access the meeting and where we're here, as you can see, my husband and I. So yes, thank you so much for allowing us to be able to speak. We really appreciate it. We are abutting landowners and you know, although we do not oppose solar farms or alternative forms of energy, we do oppose that it's in a residential area, you know, way in our backyard. And so we do have several concerns that we would like to address in the hearing. And we are going to try to keep it to the application as you have requested, but I do have to say that we have some personal concerns as well. And I think that perhaps us expressing those concerns will allow us to, in the future, if someone else applies for a solar farm will perhaps allow for some changes in the current commercial application that we are looking at. So I guess the first thing that I want to address, and I'll try to be fairly quick about this, and my husband's going to chime in as well, is we are located right on the knoll adjacent to the property in question. And so obviously, you know, we're very concerned being a budding landowners of the location as well as the destruction of the habitat. And I've been in Belgrade all my life and my family has been here for generations, the Sawyers. And so we sit back from the road and we really love our lot with our house and it's very peaceful. It's very aesthetically pleasing. We love to birdwatch. We have deer that frequent the area. We watch turkeys and lots of other, you know, wildlife that are certainly in jeopardy due to habitat loss, due to degradation of the land, you know, fencing and other aspects of this particular project. So yeah, that's a great concern to us as abutting landowners. And although I know that this ordinance that we're looking at, the commercial ordinance does supersede, I do want to mention the Comprehensive Plan of Belgrade that was passed in 2014. And for those of you that do not know what the Comprehensive Plan is, it's really a long-range plan and vision, and I'm going to quote rate from it to know where we're going as a community and as a culture so that we can preserve what we love and change things that interfere with where we want to go. And so a couple of findings that as I look through this pretty extensive Comprehensive Plan that I want to just bring up, since we do have some citizens joining us in addition to the board, is that at the end of this Comprehensive Plan, you know, the public was surveyed and question five E in regards to land use indicating how we manage development and growth within the town asked people, and this was the exact question, should development be managed to minimize natural habitat, natural resources, scenic beauty and the special character of Belgrade? And on a scale of one to 10, with one being disagree and 10 being agree, out of 306 people, out of 306 people who took this survey, 220 indicated a 10 that they certainly agree with this particular question. Also, question 23, does the town need to make additional efforts to protect the quality and quantity of Belgrade's natural resources? And the results that I am going to cite are 88% said yes to undeveloped land, yes to undeveloped land, yes being 211, no being 28, and 62 being neutral. So I know that, that this commercial ordinance can't certainly, you know, be superseded by the Comprehensive Plan of Belgrade, but I really feel like it needs to be taken into consideration. You know, this survey allowed the citizens of Belgrade to take part, and I think that's a really important piece to share. My husband also wants to speak about our property possibly being devalued, so I'm going to shift it over to him as well.
Yeah, before I start, I would like to thank the planning board members for their volunteer service. Appreciate your efforts and your time in dealing with these matters. So I specifically looked, the question I asked, what impact is this going to have on property values? I called various real estate agents. I called town assessors. I know there was a solar project in Farmington. I called a tax assessor. The answer I got was, we don't know. This is new. We don't know what the impact will be. So I then went to states that have solar farms and I found a study at the University of Texas who, they asked questions of all states, 23 states, tax assessors responded, about 40 tax assessors responded. And they say there will be an impact depending on how close you live to the solar farm project. And the chart that they presented was based in dollars and the one that was very similar to us, because we're about 100 feet away from this solar project. Matter of fact, from my back deck to the property line, 92 feet, I measured it the other day, it indicated that 1.5 megawatt, I stand to lose estimated $18,874 in property value. Now, this is a two mega, megawatt station, so it might even be more than that. So that is my concern as, you know, as a homeowner, the impact on, on property value being in, you know, obviously in a residential area. And that was a University of Texas study. And as you get further away from the station to the solar farm, property values, I think it's at 1,000 feet, they start to turn and go the other way and property values increase. So those people that are, you know, half a mile, mile or two, three miles and beyond, their, their property taxes and property values went up. So that's, that's one of the concerns that I have. I didn't, I didn't know if, if anybody can, can comment on that in terms of that, but that's the concern that I have.
Okay. Also, we have some additional environmental and safety concerns. And I've done quite a bit of research and it looks to me like this solar farm could be here for possibly up to 30 years. And that's, that's a really long time. And some of the research that I have done shows that the solar modules and components of them can have lead and cadmium and other metals that have been linked to various types of cancer, respiratory issues, nervous system damage, and so on. And so, you know, we are concerned about the panels degrading over time, possibly with rain and heat and other, you know, natural elements. And, you know, that possibly chemicals can leach into the soil and into the groundwater. And, you know, we're also concerned with this when this particular farm has to be decommissioned, which my, my husband will speak to in a few minutes. And so, you know, again, as my husband alluded to a few minutes ago, solar farms haven't been around that long and there's not a lot of data there. And I looked pretty diligently as to how it can impact the environment and the residents long-term. So, you know, I just thought I would mention that and maybe someone can speak to that later on. Additionally, we are concerned about, you know, a fire occurring. And I do appreciate the addendum that we received or the revisions that were made. I did notice that they added five additional gates to the fencing to allow for first responders in the Belgrade Fire Department and whoever else needs to respond in the event of a fire or some other emergency. But I guess as an abutting landowner, after reading the standard operating guidelines that are in the ordinance itself, that I am concerned about the fact that electrical components can give off gases and fumes during combustion and that it said that firemen and women and those involved, should there be a fire or some other issue, should wear self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA? And obviously, if there's no threat to life, to let it burn, let it burn. And, you know, as my husband said, we're, we're really close in proximity and to make sure you evacuate the area up to 300 feet away. Well, our house is less than 300 feet away. And, you know, so that is a concern and my parents' property, that is just beyond our property is a concern. And so obviously, we would want the first responders and the Belgrade Fire Department to be safe. You know, that's first priority and any life that might be in there that, you know, they might need to respond to. But that really, that really concerns me. And it also concerns me about the possible pollutants that are going to go into the air, into the ground. And, you know, they can have a significant health risk to us and to other neighbors and in the long term. And, you know, I did read in many sources that vandalism is a problem with solar farms. They're more prone to vandalism and, you know, that's a concern and certainly that could lead to a fire or some other. So lastly, the, the noise, I know it was addressed in the application and it does say it will not exceed 60 decibels between the hours of seven and nine 30 PM and 45 decibels between nine 30 PM and seven. You know, I still expect there's probably going to be a hum or a noise and, and certainly that is a concern with the inverters and transformers. And definitely during the construction process, as indicated in the application, that it would be louder than that. And it looks to me like it's going to be a four-month construction process with lots of heavy equipment. And I guess what most caught my eye was the vibratory hammering, which will be used to allow for brackets to be inserted into the ground. So. Are we cutting off? So, so the excess noise during construction is an issue as well. So we just wanted to address that.
Onto decommissioning. In my research, some of the things that I learned is there should be a decommissioning plan in any type of application in terms of if this company does not work, goes bankrupt, how are things going to be disposed of? Is the Belgrade transfer station equipped to handle all of the PV panels and modules, the transformers and so on? Are their funds going to be set aside for cleanup costs? And I'll say that because last year, we know that Janet Mills signed legislation to allow net metering, which allows retail consumers or people who are producing electricity, CMP, to buy it at retail rate. That, I mean, that could change in three or four years with a new administration. I know there's an organization in New Hampshire, New England Rate Payers Association, they have currently with the Federal Regulatory Commission to alter net metering, which could then render the incentives for these solar projects, you know, wouldn't be profitable. And if that's the case, what is the plan to dispose of, take care and return the land to, you know, its other state? And even the governor of Maine, Janet Mills, said that, this is an exact quote, "It would put into question some of the state's new solar and distributed generation programs that garnered bipartisan support in driving significant clean energy investments in Maine's economy." She even is admitting that this could really, you know, and it may be in a year, maybe two years, if that happens and is no longer profitable, who's going to clean it up and or is it going to be up to the town?
Yeah, who's going to pay for this?
And I think the last concern and question that we have is will the Town of Belgrade benefit in tax revenue? Because we do know that in March of 2019, LD 1430 was passed that basically said Maine joins the majority of New England states in enacting a statewide property tax exemption for residential and commercial solar property. So, and this is, I understand you buy shares in this company and you, you will get a reduction in your CMP bill, but if you don't, as a Belgrade resident, you're not going to get any benefit either, you know, through tax revenue or anything like that. So we try to be brief and again, I thank the planning board members for their volunteer service and we will turn the floor over.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'd like to make sure we try to address them straight away. So I turn to the solar field representatives to see if we could answer some of the last questions in particular, going sort of in reverse order relative to the question about decommissioning funds that may or may not be set up and so on. I would turn to you folks, please.
Thank you, Peter. This is Steve Buxfeld from Solar Fields. We have talked about what would happen if the project were to be decommissioned. Basically, there are a lot of valuable recycled materials, materials that could be recycled that are going to be the major part of the project. There's steel for the frames and aluminum associated with the racks. Those are both valuable materials on the recycling market. We believe that the funds necessary to deconstruct the project, should that be required, would be well spent because they would be paid off by the revenues from recycling the materials.
I've got a question, Steve. What would happen if the panel or panels catch fire and burn? Or will they?
The panels themselves are not, are super combustible or flammable. They, you know, they're made of glass and aluminum and wire, so I think you can imagine how that would burn. The primary fire risk at a, at a site like this is a grass fire, which Belgrade Fire is well-equipped to handle and we're providing provisions for that. So the other equipment, you know, like the transformer, the inverters, the panel boards, those are, are pretty well into the road and could be easily accessed. So the rest of that is surrounding the facility and applying water to the, to the grass around it.
But the, the ingredients, if you will, or the things that make up the panels would not burn and end up spilling out or whatever onto the ground?
No, no, what's inside the, the panels is they're made of glass and wire and then also like silicone-based and it's in powder form. So there's no liquid or anything inside the panels themselves.
So the panels aren't made out of, so the panels aren't made out of lead and cadmium and other metals like that?
No more so than a typical piece of, you know, electrical equipment, depending on the various conductor metals that they use on the interior varies by model, but it's a very small amount. The majority of the panel itself is aluminum, copper wire and glass.
But it is possible that if the panels heat up, whatever lead and you have several panels in the field, depending how big the fire is, lead will melt and seep into the ground. Is that correct?
No, I can't speak to whether that's a possibility or not.
Can I pose a question to Solar Fields, please?
Want to add a question?
Yes.
So Dana, if that's you talking, there's quite a lot of feedback from your current situation.
Yeah. Does anybody know how to get rid of the feedback?
Looks like you have two devices, Dana, maybe.
You have two devices going on and you can only have one of those, otherwise it will create that reverb. So if you'll kill one of the devices that you have going right now.
I only have one device going.
Hey, then I'm going to kick the other one off then. Here we go. All right.
Okay. Yeah, so my question's back to Solar Fields is I've had some experience with scrap metal and the value of it. You know, steel is scrapped is $43 a ton. If you buy a bar of pipe, it's $43 for one bar. If there is no decommission plan for this site, I have concerns long-term for the town. It would become a hazardous waste site where if we put a building up and somebody goes defunct, that building has more value. It's not going to become a hazardous waste site and it's not going to be something that is not attractive to, to another buyer. My concerns here is, is the business plan as well. If we have one customer which is CMP and this project is federally funded, that tells me two things. If CMP wasn't mandated to purchase this electricity, it probably wouldn't be a great business model. Also, if it wasn't federally funded, it probably wouldn't be cost-effective to do it. 25 or 30 years from now, this is an LLC. If they go defunct and there is no money set aside and escrow to take care of this, then it's going to fall into town's hands because there's nobody who would want to purchase that property and go through the cost of getting rid of hazardous waste. I would think that with all the research that I've seen as far as the, the lot scales and, and all the environmental impacts on building this, that there would have been a game plan on dismantling just as in-depth as the one to build it. Because I think long-term, this, this could have a short-term benefit to whoever owns it. Long-term, it could have a long-term side effect to the whole town of Belgrade.
Can I ask who just, who was just speaking?
Yeah, my name is Dana Mishu.
Okay, Dan.
Yeah, I'm a Belgrade resident. I live on 135.
Yeah.
And, you know, just for a little, I've had multiple businesses, so I'm not opposed to, you know, somebody having a business. I think where I have concerns is when the business impacts other people and it can't be self-sufficient, those, those are more my concerns. You know, if, if, if this business is sustainable, then it should have the funds to put in escrow to take care of any removal cost long-term.
Thank you, Dana. Okay. So we've heard some concerns that were expressed and I'm, I'm hearing that a decommissioning escrow fund is an important element at the very least of this particular project, among other things that were expressed. And I appreciate those other, other sentiments that were expressed. As everybody knows, we have no control over what happens, whether it's this application or another one, even if it were to be approved, it's, it still has to be approved by PUC and we obviously have no control over any of the aspects there, right? I just wanted to make sure we stated that upfront, too. Two solar fields. One of the things that was made pretty clear was the idea of an escrow account. I guess I would just ask you to consider that.
Yeah. We, we don't think it's necessary, but, you know, we would, we would set something like that up if it was thought necessary by the board.
All right, from my perspective, Peter, I, I would think that, I may be wrong, but I can't imagine that the cost of scrap would take care of the full decommissioning. That, that's not researched answer or comment, but.
Rich, I hear what you're saying. I'm not an expert on, on that matter either, so you may want to err on the side of caution and consider that as a, something to request.
Also, also in my research, the recycling of the silicone from the solar panels, that process is not in place yet.
Thanks, Craig. So it sounds like what you've read and researched says that it's, it's not ready for that or the technology isn't ready for that particular part.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the European market, it's actually quite a bit more advanced than in the United States right now. And they're making strong gains on figuring out the recyclability of solar panels. So, you know, again, it's an ever-evolving market and it is new, but there, you know, there is starting to become a market for, you know, whole panel recycling and production to limit and not create hazardous waste and use can reuse, so.
Let, let me just say also that the panels themselves are quite valuable. There's undoubtedly a secondary market for used panels, especially in third world. When I mentioned recycling the materials, I was talking about the steel frame and the aluminum parts of the frame. The panels are expected to last 30 to 40 years and produce a somewhat diminished, it's about 1% a year is the accepted value in the industry of the diminishment of the output of the panels. So yes, after 30 years, they would be diminished, let's say 30 to 40%. So yes, after thirty years, they would be diminished, let's say thirty to forty percent. They're still valuable. I can't imagine that we wouldn't be able to sell those out in the future.
Couple of things that I have researched is Japan right now for what they have for solar fields. We're talking about Europe and recycling the panels for what they have right now would take them ten years to get rid of. And that's a very low scale that they're building off from of what's available. Secondly, the panels have a twenty-five to thirty-year lifespan from everything I've seen, which means they would be useless after thirty years. I don't know what the resale value on those would be after thirty years. Has anybody conducted a dismantling cost to this facility as to what it would cost if these panels were damaged and not reusable?
Dana, I, I'm taking it that your question is directed at solar fields?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question? I'm not a hundred percent sure we're, we're tracking.
Do we have an estimate of what it would cost to decommission this facility?
Not currently, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Are there any other comments or questions to, to be brought forward at this time?
Yes. What's the temperature of these panels when they're heated up in full sunshine?
I don't, I don't know that offhand. It'd be somewhere to, you know, where you'd imagine, you know, hot pavement on a sunny day, similar to that.
Because I've also read where some panels get hot enough to burn, the wings rate off birds. And also, on the maintenance part of it, how, how, how often is a routine of maintenance done on these removing bird's nest and lost nests so a fire doesn't start?
I have a solar installation on my property on the West Road. And yes, the surface facing the sun is hot, but is nowhere near the temperature needed to start combustion. I, I don't believe that those issues have been a problem. There's many, many other installations around the country and around the world.
Okay, and also we have oil in the substation and the transformers. And those got to be maintained as well, which is also dropping the tanks and filtering the oil out of the tanks into a filter, then back into the tanks. How often is this going to happen and how much spillage is this? Because I've, I've done that before as, as it's summer job for CMP.
Also, the, the transformer is delivered at the site full and the, the mineral oil, it's an insulating oil that's used in it, is, lasts a lifetime of the piece of equipment. So there's no maintenance or changing.
Thank you, Craig. Are there any other questions at this time or comments?
I just want to follow up on the fire situation and whether any of the, whether silicon or whatever was, term was used, or any of these heavy metals that might be in there could make it to the environment or whatever, to the ground and air or whatever during fire.
I think, I think one thing you got to consider is that once the solar project is built, what's going to burn out there? It would have to be the grasses, which are there now anyway. So the site's going to get mowed several times during the year in order to keep the potential for burning to a minimal. So the potential to burn out there is not even as much as you might have out there today or, or if it was something like a hayfield. So we're not talking about having a lot of brush, a lot of trees, a lot of material that would, would possibly burn. And I would think to do any damage to these panels, you would have to have a pretty seriously hot fire in order to damage the panels or, or damage the metal. Again, we're talking about the site being mowed several times during the summer. So the amount of fuel that's there is pretty minimal. And if it did burn, I don't think it would burn hot enough to damage the panels. And the panels are not that close to the ground. They're ten feet, six, eight, ten feet above the ground. So I really think that the chance for a hot enough fire out there to damage the panels is really minimal.
Okay, but the panels themselves would not burn? The panels would not start?
It's just common sense. I mean, this is not like a brush fire. This is not like you have a lot of slash left over from a logging operation. It's nothing like that. It's more like a hayfield that gets mowed two, three times during the summer. So you don't have a buildup of that combustible material. So how hot is the fire going to get? Well, probably not hot enough to melt, melt glass. It's not going to be hot enough to melt steel.
Yeah, the, the question was, I just want to be comfortable that the, thinking more of electrical fire type thing rather than the grass fire.
But how are you going to start on electrical fire? How is that going to start?
Well, I don't, I don't.
It's not going to start, it's not going to start from the grass burning.
No, I, I didn't know what, I don't, I'm not real familiar with these panels as to, I know I can have an electrical fire in my house, but I, I don't know the makeup of these panels enough to know whether you can have the same type of fire in the panels.
Well, the electrical plan for the project has been submitted to Central Main Power Company. It's been accepted for their interconnection list. The electrical equipment includes a variety of safety equipment, disconnects, et cetera, that will shut the power off to the facility before anything major is going to happen to it. So the question really becomes where does this fire originate?
How is the electricity stored in this facility while it's, is it in batteries?
There have been a lot of projects proposed with battery backup. This one does not have battery backup. There are no batteries.
As in a CMP incident, you know, if you get a transformer that catches on fire, CMP is the one who's going to run out and take care of that transformer to make sure that there's nothing more extensive that happens. In this particular case, who would be responsible if something did go faulty as an emergency contact other than the fire department to come out and take care of this?
Fire department is, fire department would be the, the first responders, yeah.
Do we think they're trained in that so that we don't have to end up with an incidence like happened in Farmington when the building exploded?
That's not really a question for SolarFields to answer. I would.
No, for the board, though.
The board is not experts in what, how the fire department's trained. I would turn to the fire department to answer that question.
I guess what I'm saying is if we don't have answers, we shouldn't move so quickly on this particular proposal.
Fire department has submitted a letter saying that it has equipment that is adequate to prevent, you know, fire damage to adjoining properties. It's, it's been submitted to us yesterday, I believe, by the fire chief.
Yeah, I know, and I know there was some discussion about our, our plan. And I think, you know, our fire response plan that we prepared to assist the town of Belgrade in developing their own standard operating procedures, you know. But the focus on that is, you know, to protect abutting neighbors and to surround and drown and, and not, you know, focus on the infrastructure of this facility. You know, the key is to protect it from spreading and the, you know, the sensitive receptors off-site. So that's the intent. I think the, the design provides provisions to allow that to happen.
So I have a question for SolarFields, and it's, it's partly because I don't, I don't know this answer, so I wanted to ask the question. Instances where lightning is at all more of a factor where a number of these are healed? And I just don't know that answer, so I wanted to make sure to ask you.
All the equipment's appropriately grounded, so, and it's designed to, to be out in the open and handle those sites, those types of forces, so.
So what, what is, what is an inverter made out of? Or are you using inverters?
Yes, there are inverters.
Yeah.
What do they consist of?
So it's just a, it's a DC to AC inverter. Kind of think of what you plug your laptop into to go to your outlet. It's the same thing, just on a larger scale. So basically, it takes the DC from the array, transforms it to, or inverts it to AC power, and then it goes to an AC line that goes to the step-up transformer and from there up to the voltage that ties into the point of interconnection, the three-phase on Route 135.
So what are they made out of and where are they housed? Are they outside? Are they in a building?
They're typically in a weatherproof enclosure. They're, they're outside. These ones are string inverters, so they're smaller. They're not very large. And they mount on the, the racking themselves and they're, you know, they're made of, what? Electronics are made out of plastic and wiring and various metals. It's basically a form of computer, I guess you could say, for simplicity.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Oh, Pete, Pete, Pete Sargent, can you hear me?
Yes, Pete, go ahead.
All right, I'm sort of getting around to disaster recovery plan, you know, we're talking about here. Over, as I understand it, going towards, you're going to Waterville and going over towards Colby. On the left-hand side of the road, there's a solar farm there, as the manner of speaking. Is anyone, I guess I'll ask the applicant, have you had an opportunity to talk to some of the competition over there? Or how did they come up with it? Did they come up with a disaster recovery plan or did they not? Or, you know, is that's, you know, is that, that's what I'm thinking about. Someone's, you've been doing this before. You're not the only one. So can you kind of talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So I guess TRC, we're the engineering consultant for SolarFields. We are designing and developing and assisting in, in thousands of megawatts of solar projects across the country. I personally have done over three hundred megawatts myself. So the methods that we're proposing forward are tried and true. They've been well-bedded and they meet industry standard and it's consistent with what's being done elsewhere, all over the country in New England.
Oh, okay. And I know my, I have a nephew that works out of Massachusetts and he's doing the same thing you're doing, pretty much. And how, how are they doing things differently down there as to main? Do you have any idea?
No, nothing particularly different outside of just how the various regulatory requirements are. You know, they have different laws than we do, so things are framed slightly differently. But the general approach and technology is the same.
Okay, well, thank you. And the other question I had, I, I missed the beginning part of this discussion. And the young lady and the neighbor, budding neighbor brought up the fact that it's a residential neighborhood. I thought this was a commercial area. So could, could we kind of cover that now, just for my benefit? I missed that part.
Pete, that's a good question. So maybe Gary or someone who has the map and firm, can they, tell the, tell us the definition of this area? Looks like, I think Craig might go look for the map.
One thing, Peter, I, from, I, the comprehensive plan is kind of a guide, but we don't really have the ordinances in place to establish districts and standards specific to this project. So I question whether we can put a lot of emphasis on that comprehensive plan in terms of making decision here, but somebody, other planning boards may have a different opinion.
I, I agree with you, Rich. I had, I had another thought I just wanted to keep in mind for us going forward. When we were going through the comprehensive plan, developing it, we talked about how many acres in total could be developed in the town of Belgrade so that we would not drop below a certain amount of, of land that would still be called open space. So I think it's going to be very smart for the town to know how much, should this be permitted? What that would consume of available land? So in terms of acres. Craig?
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe this is the map that we need.
It looks like it.
Yes, and it's kind of hard to read, but I believe this is one thirty-five, one thirty-five coming down through here.
Looks like that.
Because it crosses a stream down here.
Yeah.
This is twenty-seven through there. So this would be one thirty-five. And it's all marked in orange, which is residential district. And up above it's dark green, which is Critical Resource Conservation District. So I'm not exactly sure where that property is, but it's going to be just below. It's going to be right in here. Because this is the West Road right there. Can everybody see that?
Yep. Thank, thank you very much.
So it's in a residential district.
Thanks, Craig. And Pete Sargent, hopefully that helps fill in the answer to the question you had.
Right, my, now we've kind of figured that out. Is that an issue for this project? Or any project, like business, commercial project going into a residential area? Is that an issue for us?
I, I don't think that we can base our decision on the comprehensive plan map. Because it's not tied to an ordinance.
Okay.
Just, just my thought.
Yeah, and I think you're correct, you know.
I think, go ahead, Pierre.
I, I was going to say, I think that's the same stance I would have based on, on the way our ordinances are shaped at this time.
I think, I think also that percentage of land developed is also in the comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan doesn't hold any, quote, legal weight. I think that's kind of a guide and that the town would have to move forward with other rules and regulations to implement those provisions of the plan.
Agreed. Any other comments or questions?
I have, I have a question of the neighbors. And by the way, I am an abutter as well. I feel that I can make a unbiased decision on this thing. So I, I, yeah, I don't think I need to recuse myself, but I want to let people know that I have land near there as well. Um, I was going to ask the abutters if they've seen, and this hasn't really been raised at all yet, the, the revised, uh, buffer plan that, uh, solar fields has put out and if they have any comments on that. The planting of trees and shrubs along 135 and along the edge of the, uh, project on the, I guess, northeast side.
Yes, we have seen it and we appreciate the addition of that to the plan.
I do think though, in looking extensively at all of the parts of the commercial ordinance application in question, that it's not designed, and I know we can't, you know, do anything about that right now, so to speak, probably, but there's nothing in there mentioned at all about solar fields, but certainly, um, there's wind farms.
Mining.
Mining and other components that are mentioned with specific questions in regards to those particular businesses. And so sadly enough, I feel like, and I appreciate the board and I, I, but sadly, as an abutting landowner, I feel like, um, this needs to be updated. And I know it's probably difficult to have that foresight. Um, it was written, I believe, and approved in 2017. And, um, but sadly enough, um, I don't think it was designed with solar farms in mind, because the first, I think, 50 or 60 questions really could be for any type of business that applies for this particular application. And then when you get into, um, you know, mining and, um, wind farms and so on, there are some specific questions that are there. So I would just ask, um, no matter what happens in this decision, that perhaps that particular ordinance be revisited and revised, um, to perhaps help other folks further on down the road.
Well said.
Well said. Thank you. Um, I wanted to make sure to say for the record that, uh, when we last revisited and revised this ordinance, the, the idea of solar farms was not on my mind at all. I can't speak for the other board members. Um, and we worked with professionals to help us get through the process. Um, I don't recall that particular topic brought up as, as a thing to say, oh, we want to make sure we address that with a series of questions. Um, I do recall, um, some rather strongly stated opinions about the other things that you've mentioned, uh, the turbines, mineral extraction, those got, they garnered a lot of attention, which I think is one reason why you might have noticed why we had those things in there. Mentioned that to you.
Hey, Rich, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The, um, the new buffer plan with the new vegetation, is that around the entire perimeter of the proposed site? Or is that just on 135 in the north side?
Yeah, I believe what I saw was, uh, the north side, uh, facing, uh, the mains house and, uh, two ends of one of the, uh, the, the west or north, north and, yeah. But anyway, the, each side of the existing fir trees that are up at good heights. Uh, I had raised the issue at the last meeting that I didn't feel that the buffer on 135 was adequate currently to shield the, uh, arrays from, from view or whatever over time.
Right. Cause there is a budding landowners on the other two sides and, and that would drastically affect the future outcome of tho- those properties if that buffer was not all the way around the perimeter, uh, to shield those as well. Just because they're not developed at this time, um, doesn't mean that if somebody wants to put a housing development in there or something, um, or even build a house back there, that they shouldn't be entitled to that same buffer.
Thanks, Dana. Okay. Any more questions or comments? Okay. I'm hearing none. I think it's time to get on to the checklist. And, uh, so I want to make sure that the solar fields, um, folks know we're going by the, the checklist that we had gone through last time we met, where we indicated either complete, not applicable, or a waiver request was approved or anything. And as you might recall, we, there were a couple of items that we said we started, need more information and, um, make, make sure we go through those. So planning board members, are we okay to proceed at this time? Okay. All right. Um, so the checklist that I'm looking at, there was nothing on page 33. We need more information. Yet page 34, we needed more information about the copy of the MDOT traffic movement permit and traffic movement study. I believe we received a main DOT driveway entrance permit. Did the planning board members see that?
Yes, I saw it.
Okay. So having received this permit, uh, do you feel that that would, uh, be sufficient to say that this is now complete?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, agreed. Um, and I just want to double check with Nick Poole. Um, Nick, are you able to still hear us?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, super. So that one is now complete.
Got it.
Thank you, sir. Um, now moving to page 35, and I want to thank everybody for their patience as we go through this process. Um, it's not easy. Um, and we're doing it through a virtual meeting. So this is, this is the second time that me that we've been doing this. So, uh, okay, I'm on page 35. The next one was MDEP certified contractor name. Do we have that?
At this point, we don't. We, uh, we're still early in the process, nowhere near, uh, construction of any kind. Uh, we need, as somebody else mentioned, we need to get a, uh, interconnection agreement with Central Main Power Company. We need to get a contract with Central Main Power Company. Once we have those two items in hand, uh, we would be preparing a final construction, uh, set of construction drawings and other materials that would be used to, to solicit bids for construction and, uh, the contractor would be chosen at that time.
Thank you, Steve. But that has not been met yet for the record. I'm now moving to page 36. And the first thing that's, um, still needed to be checked off was a written statement from the fire chief on the capacity of the fire department to provide adequate protection. And Mr. McKenzie supplied, um, at least one thing that I'm seeing, maybe the other board members have seen this too, and the applicants. Um, it looks like a letter where he has one, two, three, four, four bullets. He said, "Belgrade Fire Department in town of Belgrade will require this instruct, instruction project, project the following." He outlined some things there. So have the applicants seen this?
Yes, we have. And, uh, we believe that, uh, the latest plan revision, um, incorporates the majority of those requests. The other ones are more procedural as far as training and the walkover.
Right, right. Cause bullet three says, or bullet, the third bullet is, if feasible and enough water, a dry hydrant to be installed at the water source on property. Okay. So we have a letter from, um, Fire Chief McKenzie.
That or just let it go.
See. So planning board members, how do we feel about this? Craig, what do you think?
I guess complete.
I agree.
Okay. Thanks, Pete. We'll be on to the next one. Other information to meet public safety and emergency services standard. That was Article Six, Section 10. So, uh, solar fields, what, what, what addresses that?
Yeah, I think.
What's that?
What was that standard again? I'm sorry.
It said, uh, Article Six, Section 10. And it reads, "Other information to meet public safety and emergency services standard." Article Six, Section 10.
That was just a correspondence with the fire department.
Pardon me, I'm just kind of getting there. I just want to make sure we are addressing it. So planning board members, that's page 29. And there are six things there that could be applicable. So, uh, solar, um, yeah. Have you communicated also with the Canterbury County Sheriff about this? It's Section 10F.
No, because the, the project's not relying on Canterbury County Sheriff's Department to provide security detail. That was a correction we made to the form during the last meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Having talked about that, planning board members, do we call in this complete? For that one?
Complete?
Need to.
Moving on. Um, page 37, nothing. And and 38, nothing. Okay. So there was one thing that we still do not yet have, if I recall correctly, and that is on page 35, it's an MDEP certified contractor name and number. The board members, are you, are you, are we all in agreement on that?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So procedurally, we are complete except for one thing. How would the board like to handle that one item?
I, I would suggest that we move forward and if, if the application were to be approved, that that be a condition, uh, of approval, that the name be provided before work starts.
Okay. I like that. So I, I would tend to agree that this is, uh, complete with the exception of that one item. I think that could be handled with a, with a condition. So if that's the case, let's see now. Board members, help keep me straight. Are we just going on to the findings as a fact at this time? Or is there?
I think we can do that unless there's further discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think we've covered quite a bit of territory up to this point. So maybe we can move on to find your facts and see what happens.
Hey, I, I have one question of the board, uh, regarding the decommissioning and, uh, escrow or whatever. Do we have, does the board agree that we could, we would have authority to have that as a condition? Uh,
That, that's a good question, uh, Rich. And well, my, my gut feeling at this point is no, we don't, but maybe we do. I, I just don't know. But I don't see anything in our, uh, ordinance that talks about, um, escrow accounts, et cetera. So.
I don't know. I think we should have something about decommissioning involved in this with a condition, cause we're just going to, you know, accept that it's going to be around for 50 years, just laying there idle with no, I don't think that's right.
Well, the applicants, when asked, uh, did say that they would be, uh, willing to provide that.
What if they're not around at that point?
The escrow account that would be set up, um, for the project would cover it.
Then the question would be, how do, how would we assess how, or even decide how much would have to be set aside?
All right. Pete, can I sort of chime in here?
Yeah.
Come up with an escrow, the way you would do it is, is, is with a, a letter of credit. You can do that. And it's, and it's similar to what the, uh, at the Bureau of Insurance where I used to work. Uh, they had the self-insurance of workers called, a company with self-insure. And for, and they, and it was in the law itself that they, uh, collateral, uh, letters of credit were put up in the event of, um, uh, bankruptcy or part of the, 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 the entity. So we're doing the same thing. And I don't see anything in our, in our ordinance or the regulations here that, you know, accommodates this type of thing. So it's, it'd be nice if we had it, but we don't. So, you know, we're, that's, unfortunately, that's what we're, the situation we're in at the, at the time.
So Pete is, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was just asking Pete if he's looked at the ordinance closely and I'm going through.
I haven't, but, uh, go ahead.
Well, I, I just feel that, uh, we need to look at that before we make any final decision.
Okay.
I'm currently reviewing it. So go ahead, keep going.
I guess I'll just ask the solar fields applicants, um, if, if we see no, no provision in our ordinance that would allow us to require it, would you voluntarily offer it?
Yeah, I think, um, as a condition of approval, we would prepare a decommissioning plan with a decommissioning estimate. And submit that to the town for review and approval prior to issuing a building permit. And submit that to the town for review and approval prior to issuing a building permit.
We are consideration on that. Okay. So planning board members are, we move on then to findings of fact. I need to hear from members, thumbs up or down? Okay, we're waiting.
I'm just looking.
Thanks, Greg.
I'm just looking at section 14 on waste, solid waste. And disposal of all solid waste on a timely basis. Environmental safe manner, any toxins or hazardous special waste must be disposed of and applies with state and federal regulations.
Anybody find anything in the ordinance yet that would specifically get at this?
Is this, are we on the escrow account?
I think we were, yeah.
There's a provision that the board can retain experts if needed and paid out of an escrow account by the applicant, but I didn't find anything specific about an escrow account to cover like decommissioning or something of that nature.
And Rich, the applicants when asked said that they would supply a commission in.
Yeah, yeah.
As a letter of approval. Okay, so there, there are two things. Okay. All right. Are we okay to proceed to the findings of fact?
I believe so.
Okay. Craig, I don't, I don't want to rush us. Are we okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So I have the findings of fact in front of me here, maybe go through. So for everybody listening. So there's a lot of discussion and reading of items here, so please bear with us as we go through it. Page one talks about this project with a project name, applicant name, applicant mailing address, authorized representative, if any, and project location. Information. I'm looking at a blank findings of fact, but what we would do is turn to our secretary to help fill these things, those things in. The other things that we'd fill in.
Yeah, I got that already all filled in, so I'll just follow along with whatever you guys have.
Thanks. So page one, we have not yet made a decision, but we're going to go through the findings of fact to help us with that.
Yeah, for the public's information, we have to go through the review criteria, which is essentially in the finding of facts, and we base our decision on whether it meets the review criteria.
Thank you. And this is addressed to the town of Belgrade Code Enforcement Officer. We say that the town of Belgrade Planning Board has considered the application of, and they would say the name, and, and then get into it. So we'd have language for the application summary filled in there. Number two on the next page, application review process will include the date. Was a site visit conducted? Did anybody do, do a site visit?
I just did a drive by in the road, but that's, that was, that was, you know, minimal.
Okay.
Same here, I didn't walk the property.
Craig?
No.
And I did not either. So we, that would be no there. Number three. Review criteria findings. Let's see here. The applicant has requested in writing that the board waive, did you request any waive? Any waivers?
Request any waivers?
No, no waivers, no.
I didn't, didn't remember any. Standards are not applicable due to the okay. I think we're okay to move on to the next thing. I'm now on to page three. Okay, let's get into it. So the board finds that the project will not or will cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in that, in the land's capacity to hold water. This is referencing Article Six, Section Three and 13. Will not, will not, thank you.
I think, I think Mike Barrett indicated the last time that we need to especially on Zoom meeting, make clear of each other person's vote, or so.
Okay, so.
I think we probably need to all respond yes or up or down.
I see. So if there's a discussion, then we would then resolve that. So, so we'll go through it. Rich?
No, will not.
Craig?
Will not.
Pete?
Will not.
I say will not. Move on to the next one, or will have an adverse impact on freshwater wetlands as Article Six standards three and six. Rich?
Will not.
Pete?
Will not.
Craig?
Will not.
And Peter Rushton will not. Sorry, everybody, this is going to take a little bit. C, the board finds that the project will not or will have an adverse impact on a lake pond or stream. Article Six, Sections 13 and 15. Rich?
Will not.
Pete?
Will not.
Craig?
Will not.
Peter Rushton will not. Item D. The board finds that the project will not or will provide for adequate storm water management. Article Six, Section 13. Rich?
Will.
Pete Sergeant?
Will.
Craig?
Will.
Peter Rushton will. E, the board finds that the project will not or will provide adequate sewage disposal.
I think that's an NA.
Yeah, I would say that's an NA. Oh, let's go through the same line. So Rich, you say NA?
Yes.
Pete Sergeant?
NA.
Craig Alexander?
NA.
Peter Rushton, NA. The board finds that the project is not or is located in a flood plain area and conforms or does not conform with the Belgrade Flood Plain Ordinance. Rich?
Is not.
Pete Sergeant?
Is not.
Craig Alexander?
Is not.
Peter Rushton is not. F, the board finds that the project will not or will result in air or water pollution. Article Six, Sections 1, 13H and 15. So Rich?
Will not.
Pete Sergeant?
Will not.
Craig Alexander?
Will not.
Peter Rushton will not. G, G, the board finds that the project will not or will have sufficient drinking water for current and foreseeable needs of the development. Rich?
I'd say NA. I don't think there's anything that involves drinking water.
Pete Sergeant?
NA.
Craig Alexander?
NA.
Peter Rushton, NA. H, the board finds that the project along or in conjunction with existing activities will not or will adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater. Article Six, Sections Five and 15A. Rich?
Will not.
Pete Sergeant?
Will not.
Craig Alexander?
Will not.
Peter Rushton will not. I, the board finds that the proposed, we will dispose of all solid waste in conformance with local regs type and quantity of waste to the town transfer station facility will not or will exceed its capacity. Rich?
I would say well. The, the question has to do with, and it's a totally different issue really, the decommissioning or whatever, what happens there, whether, but during the course of the operation of the facility, there really won't be significant waste disposal. So I guess probably the answer will not. But I still, I think we need to, at some point, come back to make sure that we're dealing with the decommissioning and what happens then.
Got it. So Rich, sounds like will not, and then food for thought for later. Pete Sergeant?
Will not.
Craig Alexander?
I agree with what Rich said.
Same. We need to keep an eye on the decommissioning aspect. So will not. J, the board finds that the project will not or will have a significant detrimental effect on adjacent land uses and properties affected by waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odor, or their effects from the project. Article Six, Sections 1, 11, 12 and 15A. Rich?
Will not.
Pete Sergeant?
Will not.
Craig Alexander?
Not really sure on that one.
Are we concerned about glare?
Glare and just the whole thing.
I hear you. It's, it's a
You know, I just don't want to say an answer, just of because I think it is going to affect the abutting properties. I don't know.
Yeah, so the question is, will have a significant detrimental effect on adjacent land uses and properties affected by noise, glare, lighting, et cetera.
The, the issue for me, Peter, when I said will not, was I, I felt I had to look at the waste, noise, glare, lighting, fume, smoke, dust. And I understand that we'll put it this way, I didn't think any of those particular items were ones that I could not that would not be addressed or would, would not be okay.
So there's no glare off these panels?
What was that, Craig?
So there's no glare off these panels?
I would ask the solar fields people to help us out. Is there glare off these panels?
Or so, as far as glare goes, the, the panels themselves are designed to absorb the majority of the light. The glare is not a huge concern, especially considering the arrangement of this facility, the tracker panels and the southerly exposure. As an aside, we have projects that are built adjacent to airport runways with extensive gling glare analyses that, that show that poses no issues there. And people kind of describe it similar to like flat water and when looking at water. So it, that's kind of the best way I can describe it.
The orientation of the site is such that the panels will be facing away from the road and the northern abutters or closest. So we, we believe it's a good site from that point of view.
Thank you, Steve.
Is the public allowed to speak or no?
Um, if, if you have a comment, you can bring it up.
Well, it will affect, it will affect the, the southerly and eastern borders to those future developments. Now, you know, that property that abuts that bottom side is in my wife's family, and I think we're only taking into consideration, you know, two sides of the property. We put buffers up for those other two sides, but we haven't addressed the two remaining sides to make sure that there's buffers so that they won't impact the use of those properties dramatically down the road.
And that's what I was thinking as well, is future development on private properties and so I guess I'm going to go with will.
So you're saying it will have a significant detrimental effect?
I wouldn't want to look at them. I would believe it'd bring the property values down. As detrimental.
One of the things that you're talking about here is possible future development, and the ordinance doesn't address that. Your ordinance addressed what's there now. I don't see how you can judge this project on what you think might happen in the future. And another consideration is that there is, within the property boundary of this project, a substantial wooded buffer along the southern side that is part of this project and would not get cleared as part of this project, even if somebody else built to the south. So again, I don't see how you can try to judge this project based on something you think might happen in the future.
It does impact the property, though.
Yes, and it says adjacent land uses, so no, it doesn't have to be right at the moment.
What is the use there now? It's forest.
Yes.
It's not a development now.
Future.
Then, then whoever develops that property at that time has the option to put in a, a buffer, and they have setback on their property as well.
So, so to try to straighten this out then, okay, A, the findings of fact is written. We have to look at this based on the standards in the, in the article that we're talking about. Article Six standards, Sections 1, 11, 12, 15A, based on, and then we're supposed to give reasons, so we cite application submittals say they would be insufficient in addressing this or, or lack thereof. That's a finding. So I understand what Craig is, is saying, and I understand how he's feeling, and Dana has mentioned it too. And I'm, I'm curious if the applicants would, would feel comfortable addressing the other two boundaries with a, a buffer that would be with what they're saying to put in on the north boundary.
Well, I
Well, I
here. Again, the, the southern boundary between Steve's property boundary on the south and the field and where the panels are going to go is all forested. So there's
That's part of, that's part of
And that southern boundary from Route 135 going back to the east, it's, it's forested. And even on the southern boundary, there's at least about a twenty-five to thirty-foot forested buffer between the field and his property boundary. And that's one of the differences is that north side of the property doesn't have a forested buffer on Steve's property, but the south and the east does.
Yeah, if you look at
And that will remain forested.
Yes.
Correct. We have no proposal to do any tree clearing in, in those areas.
We, we will commit to, to that.
That could be a condition if we prove it, Peter, that the existing forest be retained.
Yeah, it looked like the retention pond went right to the property line. I'm sorry if I misunderstood that.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
It doesn't. There's actually probably thirty-five feet or more between the pond and the property boundary. And you can see that pretty well if you pull up sheet C2. It's got the property boundary overlaid and the whole project overlaid on aerial photos. So you could see what we're talking about in terms of where the property boundary is and relative to the field and the development.
Plus, it's probably worth mentioning too that along the, the southern property boundary and then off property, which wasn't delineated because it's off property, but there, there's also jurisdictional streams and resources there. So those are protected by the state's Natural Resources Protection Act, and they could not be cleared without state permitting, mitigation fees, things of that nature. So it's unlikely those areas would be cut.
So based on what you've submitted for this item J, I know two people have said it will not have a significant detrimental effect on adjacent land uses and properties affected by these things. Craig had said that it will. And I'm trying to think about this from my own perspective. I think for me, based on what I've seen that has been submitted, I would have to say that it will not have a significant detrimental effect. So planning board, are we okay to move on on this one?
I am. Peter Sodgensen speaking.
Rich Baker?
I'm okay to move on.
Craig, are we okay to move on?
Yes.
K. The board finds that the project will not or will cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion. Rich will not. Pete Sergeant will not. Craig?
Will not.
Peter Rushton says will not. I. The board finds that the project, to the maximum extent possible, will not or will have an adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic or archaeological sites, or any public rights for physical and visual access to the shoreline of a water body. Article six, standards, sections four, five, A, six, eleven, and twelve. Based on, and we have to have reasons. So four, five. So section four is dealing with historic and archaeological resources. Section five, A, has to do with materials storage, if I'm reading this correctly. Article six, section six. Natural resource protection. Is any part of this in a critical natural area?
No.
Thanks, Rich. And we just, I think we discussed, but I'll ask it again. Any part of this, part of the main IFNW as deer-wintering areas?
There's, there's no significant wildlife habitat on the project.
Planning board, do we, do we know what, what the, what the deer-wintering areas are mapped in that?
There aren't any on that property.
Thank you. Okay. That was six, eleven. Eleven has to do with screening of structures, parking lots, and other.
Did we vote on that one?
No, I'm going through the, the sections of this article to see what, what the should be. Screening of structures and twelve has to do with signs. So based on those areas, those, those standards that we just talked about, the board finds that the project, to the maximum extent possible, will not or will have an adverse effect on, on those things. Scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic and archaeological sites, or any public rights for physical and visual access to the shoreline of a water body.
If it had, or you ready for a vote?
I am.
Okay. If it hadn't been for their revamped buffer plan, I would have voted will. But with the plantings on 135 and along the north side, I will, will not.
Okay, thanks, Rich.
Also, I definitely propose a condition later on about not cutting the forest or trees on the remaining two sides where it was forest.
Okay. Thanks, Rich. And then Pete Sergeant?
Will not.
Craig Alexander? Peter Rushton says will not. M. The board finds that the project, to the maximum extent possible, will not or will have an adverse effect on significant wildlife habitat. They talk about the main beginning with habitat program IFNW. Main natural areas. So will not or will have an adverse impact.
Will not.
Thank you. Pete Sergeant?
Will not.
Craig Alexander?
Will not.
Peter Rushton will not. Oh, the board finds that the project does not conform or conforms with all other applicable town of Belgrade ordinances, including but not limited to shoreline zone, minimum lot, subdivision, multifamily dwelling, manufactured housing, mobile home, parks, solid waste and recycling, municipal street and road, adult businesses, supplemental junkyard, and auto graveyard and tree ordinances.
Conform.
Conforms?
Yes.
Pete Sergeant?
Will. Is that the proper answer, will?
It either does not conform or does conform with all other applicable.
Does conform.
Conforms. Thank you. Craig Alexander?
Does.
That it does conform. Thank you. Peter Rushton, it conforms. P. The board finds that the project will not or will reasonably increase the concentration of phosphorus in a great pond based on, we have to, so the board finds that the project will not or will increase the concentration.
Will not.
Thanks, Rich. Pete Sergeant?
Will not.
Craig?
Will not.
Peter Rushton will not. Q. The board finds that the project will not or will conform to material storage provisions of this ordinance. Rich Baker?
Will.
Pete Sergeant?
Will.
Craig Alexander?
Will.
Peter Rushton will. The board finds that the applicant has or does not have sufficient right, title, or interest to undertake the development based on. Rich Baker?
Has.
Pete Sergeant?
Has.
Craig Alexander?
Has.
Peter Rushton has. S. The board finds that the applicant does or does not provide for safe and adequate parking. Article six, section nine.
Does. There really won't be a lot of parking, but
Right.
Or what will be done.
It's not designed for public access.
Would that be NA?
I think the, the materials that they, that were submitted outline and define that it is not made for public, public. So I would say the board finds that the applicant does or does not provide. I would say does provide for adequate parking based on the application, application submittals. I think. Am I off?
I would say does.
I'll change mine to does.
Okay, Craig?
Does.
And Peter Rushton says does. S. T. The board finds that the project will not or will conform to all applicable provisions of this ordinance, including but not limited to development standards for specific activities where applicable. Article seven, based on those things. So, Rich Baker?
Will.
Pete Sergeant?
Will.
Craig Alexander?
Will, I guess. What's Article seven?
Article seven. About getting there?
Noise.
Thank you.
So will.
Article seven. Reference Article seven. Oh wait, Article seven is development standards for specific.
What pages are?
I'm on page thirty-nine.
That's the one for wind farms and things of that.
And mineral extractions and things that, of that nature, of which does not list wind, solar arrays. It was definitely focused on overnight accommodations, telecommunications towers, wind energy facilities. And those were the items, those were the specific activities that were listed in Article seven.
I say will.
It will.
If it's even applicable.
Right, I'm, I'm really curious about that, Craig, because as the mains had pointed out, and I think Dana talked about, you know, we, we don't have this part of our ordinance. So let me, let me toss this out. I don't know how I could say that it will conform to specific, specific activities that are not listed even in the, in that article.
NA?
I would say NA. I would also recommend that we list the fact that at the time of the last revision of the commercial review ordinance, specific activities such as solar arrays were not included in the development of the ordinance.
Pete, I would concur with that. I'll change mine to NA with that response, you know.
Okay.
Would not.
Thank you, Pete. Do the other board members see where I'm going with that?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, Rich, are you, are you saying with my comment?
Yeah, yeah. I'll go with your comment.
Okay, and Pete, you said NA with the comment that I had?
Yes.
Craig Alexander?
Yes.
Same. And I also say that same thing, NA with that comment that I had. Checking with Nick Poole, Nick, did you get that?
I did.
Thank you, sir. So we're at a decision point. We either go to approve it. Therefore, the town of Belgrade Planning Board approves subject to the following conditions, or we deny the application. So at this point, are we ready to vote?
Yes, Peter Sergeant speaking.
And Rich, are we ready?
Yeah, I think we, I think what we, do we need a motion or?
I think we need a motion to either approve or, or deny. And we had talked about basically three conditions. I believe in the conditions had to do with a decommissioning plan. I think, this is my own recollection, there's a DEP contractor number, name and number that we have not yet received, as well as the, the proposal of forestry on the other two edges to be retained, or something along those lines.
Yeah. I would, I guess at this point, make a motion, I gotta, I'm not sure I got the wording down. A motion to approve with the conditions that one DEP contractor, certified contractor, name and number be provided to the code enforcement officer before any work begins on the property. That, and we can discuss this to try to get it right, but to create a decommissioning plan and, and escrow, escrow account for the decommissioning, to be held for decommissioning the facility at a, an amount approved by the board. And what I'm thinking is they're going to have to come back to us with this decommissioning plan and the amount of the escrow account for our approval prior to the beginning of the project. And three, that all forested areas that are not part of the actual array project shall remain and not be removed.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor with three conditions. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Peter, can I interject? Sorry.
Yes.
So typically how that works with the decommissioning, the, the town would have to be listed as a benefactor of that plan. So typically what we're used to seeing is that gets pushed off to the select board in a town like Belgrade. And I don't, I don't know your process exactly, but typically they need to be involved to sign off.
Okay, so thank you for that insight. I've never done this before, so I have no idea how that would work.
And can we word it such that it gets the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board? And can we word it such that, uh, it gets the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board?
Peter, I, I think Rich has suggested a, a really good idea, and frankly, I may, uh, look to our friends at KV Cog to give us some guidance on, uh, maybe how best to go about that.
Okay, thank you, Anthony.
If I, yeah, if I could comment on that, uh, I, I believe other towns have already, uh, been through this decommissioning plan and, uh, escrow, uh, process, so, uh, KV Cog perhaps could, uh, provide you with some guidance in that area.
Okay. So with our condition that's addressing this, we want to, we want to make sure we word it to allow consultation with KV Cog to get guidance so that we could, you know, go to the select board and, and whatever authority is, is best, um, to approve such a, a plan, but. Want to make sure that the town is in the best position possible to do this, so. Anthony, does that sound like a good way to structure this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so, uh, Rich, uh, we've talked about, about those conditions, um. We may have to do a little bit of. I don't know if, I don't know if we have to restate the whole thing, but I know we probably have to. Make sure that that condition is worded in the best way possible to allow for consultation with KV Cog and perhaps going to, uh, the select board and the planning board.
Are you, are you looking for me to reframe that now?
Um, I don't think so, we, this is all being recorded and minuteed, I just want to try to talk it out so that, because I don't want to put words in your mouth. You, you were kind enough to come up with the conditions, so, does that sound agreeable?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have, uh, a move, uh, there's a motion on the floor with three conditions. It has been seconded. Ready to vote. All those in favor? Do a roll call. So, Rich?
Aye.
Rich says, Sergeant? Pete, are you there?
Uh, yes, I'm in favor of this.
Favor, okay. Craig Alexander?
Nay.
Nay. Uh, Peter Rushton, um, in favor? So we have three in favor, one against. So what this means is, uh, the, and there are standard conditions of approval that go along, and I do want to take a moment to, to read those out. Um, very, very quickly, so, so for the applicants, please bear with me. Standard conditions of approval, if construction has not been substantially started within twelve months of board approval, this approval and the subsequent permit from the code enforcement officer are null and void. Uh, Article four, section four. Two, the board approval of this project as described above is limited to that described in the application and depicted in the accompanying plan and other application submissions, except to the extent that the board has expressly indicated in this document that certain depictions may be revised by the applicant without further review and approval by the board. Any changes to the application site plan or other supporting application submissions must receive prior approval by the board, including but not limited to changes on the proposed location of structures, um, ropes, parking vehicle entrance exits, well, subsurface wastewater systems, method of waste, tentative location of vegetated areas, material storage, outdoor lighting, signage, methods of stormwater and phosphorus runoff control. Meaning, what is approved on the paper, um, is what is expected to be on the ground. Nothing different. Number three, unless a waiver from a specific ordinance standard had been requested by the applicant in writing and approved by the board, the development or use is required to meet all applicable ordinance standards. And for the board approval and its associated permit from the code enforcement officer is transferable to subsequent owners of the property. All subsequent owners are required to comply with the conditions of the project's board approval. So, that, having said all that, that will now go to the, um, a letter will go to the code enforcement officer who will take it from there.
So Peter, if, if I may, I'd like solar fields, if you don't mind, just to address what happens next as far as the PUC process is con- is concerned, because the town has gotten a lot of questions about this particular project, and I'm sure will continue to get those, and I want to be able to address those questions to, to citizens who, who may not fully understand there's, this isn't necessarily the, the, the end of the approval process.
Right, uh, it's not so much an approval by the PUC as a, uh, a bidding process, uh, it's gonna be a competitive bidding process that will start July first, uh, on the first round of projects. Uh. Solar fields projects will hopefully, uh, be invited to bid on the second round, we. The PUC has not set a date for the bidding on the second round. Uh, but we expect it to be by the end of the year. There are ultimately going to be as many as four or five rounds of bids. And, uh, it's speculative as to what will actually happen to this project, uh. Uh, there are many proposals on the table, um, and, uh, I really, I'm hoping that we get in on the second round, but I can't tell you that we will.
Pete, do you have any idea about, uh, how many projects the PUC intends to approve?
Yes, the first round and the subsequent rounds are designed to, um, contract with fifty megawatts of projects each. Total of two hundred and fifty megawatts. This project is two megawatts. So, that gives you an idea of the scope of what might happen here.
And do you happen to know at this point, how many, how many bidders that, that are participating in this?
We don't, uh, that information has been held, uh, you know, confidential by the Public Utilities Commission and its consultants who are running the actual, you know, mechanics of the bidding. So no, I don't know.
All right, um, that, that's all the questions that I had, Peter, although, uh, uh, I do have a proposal for, uh, moving forward with this particular meeting.
Go ahead.
So, uh, our friend Nick from KV Cog knows that you, uh, guys have another, uh, weighty application, uh, that's pretty involved sitting in front of you, and he has offered to, uh, to come back at another time to talk about, uh, the subdivision ordinance, which in and of itself is a weighty discussion, and, and given that you guys have already been at it for, uh, about two hours now, that strikes me as a, a pretty good, uh, proposition.
I would agree, and, uh, uh, Nick, our friend at KV Cog, thank you so much for your time tonight, but I would say, um, be free.
Guys, and yeah, um, I, I've been in contact with Anthony, um, we'll set up a time to, to talk about, uh, decommissioning and, and whatnot, so.
Oh, perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Yep.
Okay, um. So that. We've taken care of old business item number one, we've just addressed, um, item number two, we will get back with, uh, KV Cog another time. Um, next on our list is, uh, the shoreline application. Is the Stephen Jones and Jody Jones app, owners. Um, another, um, important topic. George, you're available at this time.
Yes, I am.
Wonderful, thank you for coming, um, thanks for hanging with us, we went through the other one. We do have a number of other people present.
Thank you.
Solar, uh, thank you very much, have a very good night.
You too, thank you.
I see representatives from, um. Hi, John, John Cunningham, how are you? Um, and, and others are still with us, thank you all for hanging in there, Chris, hi. There you go, thank you. And we have other people here who, who are interested, um, in what happens tonight. So, are we ready to dive into the shoreline application for Stephen Jones and Jody Jones? Okay, I think it would be important to talk about.
Comment for me, or?
No, I'm talking to the planning board. Yeah, I'm talking to the planning board members, are we ready to go in? Because I do want to address a couple of things upfront, um, but I want to hear from the planning board members, are we ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all. I think it's important to talk about a couple of really important things right now, um. Number one is what we talked about with the other application. Our only document, or our document that we go by to make the decision when we're, now, we should, are our ordinances that we have in place at this time. So largely, um, in cases like this, where it's in the shoreline zone, we'd be referring to our shoreline zoning ordinance. Many of you have seen it, uh, I think the applicants and representatives from budding neighbors maybe even have copies. But it was last revised in two thousand eighteen, uh, eleven, six, eighteen, did by the voters of the town of Belgrade. I just want to make sure we talk about that upfront, very important. Um. Is any of the planning, have something to say before we go very far into this? Okay.
Peter, um, if I may, um. At, the last time we met, there, we identified, uh, three issues that, uh, needed to be addressed yet in the application. Um, one was, uh, that the, uh, thirty-foot boundaries of the road would be shown on a revised, uh, site drawing. Uh, second was, um, either. That a DEP certified contractor for the excavation associated with the wastewater, proposed new wastewater system be provided. And also, uh, the issue, uh, addressing the issue of the number of trees cut in the last ten years. Um, I have a fourth item that I thought of afterwards, um, and, uh, and that is. Once we get to the stage of going through the findings of fact that we need to make for a shoreline zoning permit, uh, we need to, um, conclude whether or not this is in a floodplain. And whether, if it is, uh, if that's a problem, and, uh, we have no floodplain map, nor does the ordinance require a floodplain map of the applicant. So, uh, I had sent an email to Nick and, and, uh, to, um, Gary asking if we could, uh, consult the town's adopted uh, floodplain map. I looked at a FEMA map online, uh, it's pretty imprecise because of the scale. Uh, and there's certainly plenty of a hundred-year floodplain in the vicinity of that peninsula of land. Um, between the wetland, which is most of it, and the immediate shoreline, but. My guess is, based on the site visit that we did, that where this, where the proposed structure, new structure and septic system are, uh, or subsurface wastewater disposals are not in the floodplain just because of their higher elevation, but you can't tell from this map, and we need documentation of that.
So, um, if we need documentation of that, um, uh, where are we, or how can we, how can we attain that? Peter?
Help the town's map, uh, it, that's what applies, the map that the town has adopted. Not what I downloaded on the FEMA website.
Right.
I did, uh, real quick, I did send out a copy of our map of that section, did you guys get that?
He found it today.
Possibly, hang on, let me look.
I didn't see it, Nick, but that's because I hadn't checked my email since.
George, Nick did find that map today.
You did?
He did, after you sent me the email, Nick find, found the map.
Okay.
Okay, so we can address that then.
Okay, great. Nick, thanks for your, for your diligence in getting, uh, researching that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Nick and Gary.
Thanks, Gary, okay.
Yep.
So I had four things that, that we had before, uh, and I missed the first part of it, but thirty foot, the first one was thirty foot, what?
Uh, the, uh, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about where was the, the boundaries of the thirty-foot road.
Uh, it's right.
And that was to be shown on, there was an agreement that, that would be shown on the site drawing. Uh, item number two was, um, the DEP certified contractor for the excavation associated with the wastewater disposal system.
And the number of trees cut in the last ten years, and then the floodplain map.
Right.
Right.
Those were the, those were what I had. Others.
Did other planning board members have, uh, items that we want to specifically address? Because this is a important topic. So, hearing, hearing none additional, let's, let's try and get to it if we could. Um. The first one is about showing the, the boundaries of the road on the, on the site map. I'm, I'm looking at something called Jones Site Plan Three. Think that's the most recent one. Representing the Jones, uh, John, is that you?
Yes, that's me.
Uh, so, uh, are we to get information about the road based on Jones Site Plan Three PDF?
I, at this point, it's the best we can do. The surveyor explains that there is no specific location for the road, he can't say exactly where the thirty-foot lines are, and within the area you were asking about, because it's just not set forth in the relevant deed. But he's made an assumption that it follows the center line of the road that's there, it's, it's the best he can do. And I'm not sure how, I'm not sure where else to go with that.
Yeah. Neither, neither am I, other than the burdens on the applicant to show what we need to see. That's an important for any applicant, and we always ask, I would say we always ask that of every applicant.
Peter, um, my own view is lacking any kind of legal, um. Document locating that road, fact of matter is, it, it's on the face of the earth, and, and that's, you know, pretty good.
So. Okay, so does, does that address the concern then? I guess, George, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if.
Yeah, I, I, it wasn't my concern, uh, frankly, I'm, I was just repeating those from the meeting, uh, I believe it was, uh, the concern of some of the other interested parties, and, and the applicant had volunteered to, uh, provide that information.
Okay. How does the board feel about this? I mean, based on the fact that it's on the face of the earth and depicted as such, um, on here? Is that sufficient for our needs?
Can't seem to find the email, but if it's drawn in there where the road is originally right now, then I'm fine with it.
Okay. Uh, C note two. So I'm just going to try and describe what I'm thinking is it, let me back out a little bit. Okay, so what I'm looking at, just Craig, not that you have in front of you, but there is on the plan, there's something called a 30-foot right-of-way. It goes across the properties that prior to the Jones in the direction of the Sutton property. And it's a dashed line with a center line of R O, right-of-way, no width stated. And there's a reference to a book and page here across the Jones lot. So I'm not a surveyor, I don't pretend to be, but I'm just saying this is what we have in front of us for information. So Craig, you're okay?
Yes.
George, you're okay?
Yes.
And Rich, are you still here? I'm seeing the ceiling. Okay, Pete, you're okay?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. Okay, so that was that one. What about the DEP certified number topic? Did we receive that?
No. No. And there's a reason.
Okay.
When last we met, we were planning, we, in fact, started talking to contractors and found somebody we wanted to engage. And then because of the coronavirus emergency, we couldn't make the contract because there was no way to schedule for the work to be done. And so it's still pending. The Joneses decided that rather than try to arrange for construction as soon as possible, they don't think it's fair to be working in that area and everybody's somewhat shortened summer enjoyment period this year. And so they don't plan to have the work start until the fall. When we're hoping that it will be possible to, you know, have it done in an ordinary fashion. So we don't have a contract with a contractor. And I, I don't want to give you the name of the guy that I think it's going to be because it's unfair to put his name on the record when it might not turn out to be him. The best I can suggest is certainly there could be a condition imposed that no work is to commence until we've turned in the name of the person who it is and the, the number.
Okay, thank you.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. So Rich, I'm sorry, we started, just wanted to catch you up a little bit.
Oh, I was.
Oh, you did? Okay, all right. Thank you, thanks. All right, so we've gone through the reference to the 30-foot right-of-way thing. Talked about the DEP certification number. Next was the number of trees cut in the last 10. Do we have information on that particular item? That was a concern, I think, at the last.
The only thing I have is a report from talking to the Joneses. They've owned the property for more than 10 years. And they tell me that only two trees were cut. One was dead and in danger of falling down is the way they described it. And that there was one other tree in the vicinity of this, of this new building. I don't know how to document that other than that's what they tell me.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That's that point, please?
Sure.
For those who don't know me, my name's Chris Nagel. I represent the abutters to the south, Jeffrey and Carolyn Stiff. I have some other points, but I want to talk to this one. This is not an uncommon exercise. Someone needs to go out into the field and identify all of the trees that are more in four and a half inches in diameter, four or five feet above the ground. And locate all of them. And then they need to provide information about how many trees they need to cut to do the project. If you look at, I gave you guys a memo and there's an Exhibit 9 illustration of how many trees were there before the Jones built their new structure. And if you wouldn't mind looking at it. And you've all been there. It's a heavily wooded area. As you can see on my plan, they, they had, my plan does not show how many trees were cut to build that structure. I find it hard to believe that only two trees were cut. But the point is, as you correctly stated, Mr. Chairman, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that the project complies with this standard. And I do not believe that Mr. Cunningham's testimony even comes close to addressing the issue. If you look at my plan, no more than 40% of the trees in the green area can be cut, including the trees already cut to the Jones structure. And I'm having counted the trees, but I can tell you I would be very surprised if they could build that septic system, build the pipe to it up to the leach field and not remove at least half of the trees in the green area. But again, it's not the board's job to guess. It's the applicant's job to provide you with information so you can make a determination on the roofs review standard. And the applicant knew that in February and the applicant has done nothing.
Thank you, Chris, for your.
Other points I'd like to make, but I just wanted to speak to this particular one at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. John, did you have something to, to, to say?
Yes, I'd just like to point out that Mr. Nagel has switched on to a different issue, which we hadn't addressed. What you had asked me about was how many trees had been cut in the past. What Chris is talking about is how many trees may be cut in the proposed construction. We don't know that and how, how many and what trees would need to be cut until the contractor gets out there. And at that point in time, we know that we have to obey the ordinance. The trees have to be identified. We have to deal with the code enforcement officer and make sure that we don't violate the ordinance. We know we can't violate the ordinance. But as for the trees in the past, my, I am told, and again, I don't know how to document this, we have some pictures. I am told that there was a relatively clear, flat area where the new building is. It was known as the pad, I think. It's possible that once upon a time, there was something else there or that someone else had planned to put something there. But it was, had been relatively cleared by the time that the Joneses bought that piece of property. If you look at photos, they've, they've retained all the trees around that structure because that area was cleared and they tried to fit it within the cleared area, a cleared, flat area. I know that the code enforcement officer, I think, went out and saw the site before they were working on it and may have some recollection. I don't know that. As far as the future trees, I agree, we have to itemize them and follow the ordinance. As for the past trees, I can only report what I'm told.
Well, again, if you look at my plan, you will see the parking pad that he describes. It covers maybe half of the floor area of the building that was constructed without a permit. And I don't think you can, and again, your ordinance says the burden is on the applicant to show the project will comply with the standards. And right now, the Jones position is, I'll wait till I cut the trees and if I cut too many in the process, you can deal with me. I'm glad to know that's not how the system works. The system requires him to show you, to the best of their ability, how many trees they cut in the process of building the Jones structure and how many more trees they're going to need to cut to build the septic system. It's not a complicated process and they're just refusing to do it. And I don't know how you can even consider the application until they do.
Thank you. So any other planning board members have any questions on this right now? Because, because the question that we had was the number of trees cut in the last 10 years. What I have for information on that answer to that question is no information was given from the applicant. So we do not have that answer to that.
Rich, is there, I can't quickly find it, is there a provision in the ordinance for mitigating or, or the planting of trees to replace them on a one-to-one basis? Or something that's approved by the board for construction?
Just talking about the clear trees to put the septic system in? And that would take more trees and would be permitted that they'd have to replace other trees, but put?
Not more than permitted, but to replace on a one-to-one ratio, the trees that do have to be removed.
Well, I don't think we can require, if the tree, if the, if the trees removed, don't violate the ordinance. So there's no provision for them to, for us to require planting trees one-to-one. I'm a little bit, I was neither at the site visit nor at the last meeting when this thing was discussed, so I'm not very familiar with the project.
Yeah, I, my question has really more, less to do with the project, more to do with the ordinance. You would know off the top of your head and it sounds like the answer is no.
I think you're right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. So just as a quick reminder, this is an after-the-fact application, right? We're looking at this, just so everybody knows, as though it has, nothing has been built. Are we all clear on that?
Yes.
Everybody?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And what's being proposed is a two-story structure with garage, laundry, playroom on first floor, one bathroom and three bedrooms on the second floor with one bathroom.
Patio.
Okay. Also, the application, it says existing sewage disposal system in tight capacity, it says concrete, thousand gallon. Okay. A non-conforming lot. Kind of want to talk a little bit about, I think we talked about this last time, but just to be clear, is there any reason to think that any portion of this is not in shoreline zone? We talked about how the lake is on one side, there is a, I'm going to call it a bog on the other side of the property. As a property flows from one direction to another and narrows. Me that we have decided in the past that this entire thing is in shoreline zone, am I off in any way?
So it's all within the 250 feet of the lake.
I believe that is absolutely true.
Of the lake or the wetland that also falls under the shoreline zoning ordinance that is on the backside.
Okay, correct.
I believe the entire site is in the shoreline zone as demonstrated by the applicant's application.
Yep. Agreed. I think we're all in agreement. Just want to make sure we air it out so we know what we're talking about.
Hey, Pete?
Yep. I believe David Bean has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Virtually.
Oh, I see.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
And thank you. I appreciate the time to speak. You were talking about the trees. Prior to this structure being built, there was also another structure added on to the main camp, which probably eliminated trees too. And I'm just wondering if those are being considered into what was removed for this new structure, even though it's kind of questionable what was done there. But those were additional structure, trees removed for a non-permitted addition to the main camp. So if you could address that, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. So I would, I would start off by saying, or acting on the application that's in front of us and not other activities that happened outside of this application. I don't know, do other planning board members have more advice?
Um. When was the addition put on?
2011.
And the permit was issued.
Doesn't talk about replacing trees. And it's very clear. There shall, I'm reading from Section 15O subsection 3 on page 47. This is the review standard. There shall be permitted on any lot in any 10-year period, selective cutting of no more than 40% of the volume of trees, four inches or more in diameter, measured four and a half feet above ground level. So what that means is they need to show you every tree they've cut in the last 10 years, including the trees cut in 2011, including the trees cut in 2017 when they built this structure and including the rest of the trees they're going to remove. There's nothing in here about replacing trees. It's a very simple, direct standard. And the applicant has to meet it.
Thank you.
Here, Jack Sutton has his hand up.
Hey, thanks, Jack, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. There were also, not a lot, but I think there was one or more trees removed just before the start of construction. And it was done according to the owner who told me directly. It was done to replace the parking space that was being lost because of the construction. And that's on the east side of the access road.
Thank you, Jack. Okay. Um, so there was a question about that Mr. Bean had about what we're addressing. I suggest we're acting on what's being presented in this application. Do other planning board members have advice on this?
Based on the 10-year time period in the ordinance, if that construction happened in 2011, clearly that whatever trees were cleared to make way for that fall under the, have to be counted as for under the standard.
Unless the trees were cut a year or two before the project.
Right, they, they would have to be cut before 2000, since 2010.
Right.
And let me just remind you that the Stiffs, who I represent through my memorandums, have provided you evidence that every portion of this lot that was not cleared was heavily wooded. So we've told you by people who live right next door that a lot of trees have been cut.
Okay, thank you.
So can I raise one other, one or two other points before you discuss the project further?
Yep.
Okay, well, I just want to allude to the fact that in prior memos, we identified a whole bunch of things that the applicant. we identified a whole bunch of things that the applicant has not yet provided. And there's a list of them, but they include, for example, it's up to the applicant to provide information on flood claim. Not up to the planning board to do the applicant's work. But I guess the biggest point I want to make, that's a new point, something I hadn't thought about before. And that is, I said in my memo, I don't understand what kind of permitted use the Jones are trying to fit under in your land use table. There are only two possibilities under your table of approved land uses. And one of them is you can have a residential structure. They already have one. And now they want a second one. So it can't be a residential structure. They're trying to, they're making sure there are no cooking facilities, so it's not a residential dwelling unit. Well, if it's not a residential dwelling unit, the only other thing it could be is an accessory use. Now, the applicant has to tell us which of those categories this project fits in. And to date, he, it hasn't. And I think it's very important because if they're going to call it an accessory structure, which is much larger than their primary structure and has more space in it for living, it just can't be an accessory structure as you define it in your ordinance. So I guess I would request that you ask the applicant to tell you what kind of project they have. Is it a residential dwelling unit or is it a accessory structure? And to date, we do not know.
Let us ask. Thanks, Chris. John, could you address that question?
Sure. We talked about that at the first meeting I attended, which was back in November, when we discussed whether this was an accessory structure, because if so, it would be permitted. And that's the basis on which we've been discussing it. I would also point out that the ordinance does not say that an accessory structure can't be larger than the structure to which it is an accessory. I think it's perfectly obvious to see that anybody might have an older camp or cottage and want to build a new building with a garage and some additional living space, uh, which is perfectly acceptable. And that that new structure might be larger than the old one. In this case, the numbers don't actually match up to what has been suggested. It does not have, uh, double the living space or any such thing. But nevertheless, if it's larger, then it's larger. But it remains an accessory structure because it can't serve as a residence on its own. Uh, it can't serve, not only because it can't have cooking facilities, but it also, on by definition, can't serve as a separate living space for another family. It has to be part of the single-family residence that's already there. Uh, we know that. Those are the rules. That's what makes it an accessory.
Great. Thank you, John. Um, you, you, you stated in front of everybody here that that is an accessory structure.
Peter, we have a definition of an accessory structure.
But in a, in the definition section of our ordinance?
Yes.
It's attached to my. Please.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, Rich. You're up.
Oh, I, I didn't know if you wanted me to read it or not.
I do.
A use or structure which is incidental and subordinate to the principal structure or use. Accessory uses when aggregate, aggregate, yeah, aggregated shall not subordinate the principal use on the, of a lot. A deck or similar extension of a principal structure or garage attached to the principal structure by a roof or a common wall is considered part of the principal structure. I guess the key here is whether it's subordinate or not.
Right.
Peter, I, I have two questions. One observation, the application indicates, and it's consistent with the site drawing, that the proposed structure is, uh, 1,028 feet footprint, square feet, and the present structure is 2,087. So it's, you know, about 1,000 square feet smaller. Although I, as best I can tell from the ordinance, that's irrelevant. The, um, the other is a question for Gary. I, if you could just confirm that all the kitchen appliances have already been removed from the building in question, right?
The last time I looked at it, they were, unless they've been re-entered into the building, they were, yes.
At the last meeting, Mr. Cunningham told you they were keeping their refrigerator.
I don't think I said that.
Okay, well, you know, here's the deal. I, I mean, I can have a refrigerator in my garage. As a matter of fact, I have one in my garage. So I don't know that the ordinance really addresses having a refrigerator in an accessory building.
Well, I guess my point is.
What it says is, what it says is cooking facilities.
And I agree that they don't have cooking facilities. But I need, when people say this is not an independent living structure, I think they're fooling themselves. This has three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a playroom and a kitchen with everything in a kitchen, including a refrigerator, a kitchen, saying kitchen cabinets, kitchen counters. And people can eat uncooked food or grill their food outside.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but the ordinance defines that as it can have no cooking facility. So if you can't cook in there, I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, the ordinance is a little unclear, but I mean, I could throw a hot plate in my garage and cook, cook a meal.
What these people will be able to do, if you let them build a house with everything a person, a family needs except a stove.
No, there's going to be, there's certainly, you know, in our settlement, there's certainly going to be some deed restrictions.
And there's a lawsuit about those that unfortunately is nothing you can, lucky for you, you don't have to worry about it.
Right. Let me just go back just a little bit and we'll talk about the trees.
Yep.
I can't attest exactly how many trees have been removed since 2011. But the four corners of the septic system that is proposed to be installed are staked out. And the trees that are within those four stakes are the trees that will need to come out. So it's pretty simple to go down there and count how many trees are within those four corners that are staked.
Yep. Gotcha.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary.
Yep.
David Bean, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. It's, as far as, um, the trees again. I understand that Gary doesn't know what's been done. And to his behalf, when somebody does something that removes trees to add on to the camp, how would Gary know? And I'm sure he's following through with what's there right now.
That's correct.
And third, that structure that is there that's under question really had trees there. And Jack Sutton had mentioned that there were trees removed in the back, um, on the east side that were removed. And I agree with him fully.
Yep. I mean, there's a lot of trees on that property.
Yeah, and.
There's a lot more than remains on the neighbor's property and even several properties up the street from that.
Well, and I'm not worried about the neighbor's property. I, I'm more concerned with, um, what, um, the Joneses have done. Even they had staked out an area on the west side of where they thought the septic system should be. And trees were removed when that new building was put in, and I know that for a fact. I think certain things are being lost. As far as kitchen, you know, you know, appliances, you know, that's irrelevant as far as I'm concerned. What I'm more concerned about is was this permitted originally to have this structure built?
No, it was not.
And.
That's why we are today.
And why should you reinvestigate this? And mostly after they added on to the camp without a permit to add on another structure? Even though it's beyond, you know, the footage from the lake shore frontage.
I'm not sure where they, where they added on to the camp. In 2011, they got a permit to change the roof pitch.
Yeah, and, you know, and and my feel, my feeling, Gary, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's, you know, it's flagrant on their part to what they've done in the past and what they're trying to get through now. And I'll, I'll stop. I'll let you go. Thank you.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, again, it's up to the applicant to provide you with evidence. Now, I respect Mr. Fuller and I'm sure he knows the site way better than I do. But he's not the applicant's agent. And if the applicant wants to say we're not going to provide this information, I think we should just, you should deny the application and we should move on.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying and we'll continue on tonight. Thank you. Um, yes. All right, um, looking to the planning board members to, to, uh, help me out with this. There were four items that we thought we had to have some information on, one of which has not been addressed at all, which is the number of trees cut in the last 10 years. We do not have that information. What other concerns do we have with this application at this time?
Uh, this Peter, Peter Sargent speaking.
Yep.
And Gary, in this recent conversation, I addressed to Gary and Gary responded that there was a permitted applicant on, on the main structure back a few years ago. What was that all about?
So, so Pete, that's directed at Gary, correct?
Yeah. Please.
And Gary, can you hear us? So Pete, let me try to recap because I think I heard Gary say, and he may weigh in if he's just.
Yeah, sorry, bad connection. Peter?
Yes, sir.
They got a permit in 2011, 11 to change the roof pitch on the original cottage. That doesn't indicate any change in the square footage at all.
Okay.
And I have no proof that they changed the square footage.
That, that they did or they didn't?
I, I have no, I have no confirmation that they changed the square footage. I can't prove that.
Right. And, and this gentleman that was speaking, he seems to think that the footage was increased?
That, that's what it sounds like, yes. Yep.
Okay.
Well, what, I, I guess what has been said is that he increased the size of his deck. But I went and measured the deck. I looked at the tax records that go way back. I met with the tax assessor and we, we chatted about this. And he said, I don't see that he's increased the deck. Therefore, he may have, but I have no proof that he didn't, that he did or did not.
Okay.
All right, so at this point, what the gentleman that was speaking, uh, he's part of the, the, the area there, neighbor.
Mr. Bean.
Mr. Bean, that's basically hearsay at this point?
Well, I mean, he lives down there. He may have seen what was going on, but I, I don't have any knowledge of it. I don't have any proof that they increased the size of their deck.
Right. And he, but he hasn't taken any, so he hadn't provided any pictures?
No.
Ever, et cetera. So it's hearsay at this point?
Correct.
Right. Okay, that's, I just want to establish that one way or the other. Okay, thank you.
George?
I was, I was going to say, um, other than how a potential violation of the past may impact the tree-cutting standard, this line of discussion is irrelevant to our decision tonight.
It is.
Move on.
Yeah, we, we do need.
I, I do agree, yes.
Yep.
Okay, I, I just wanted to get a few things cleared up. All right.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I agree though.
I mean, that's, that's for Gary to resolve or, or if he can, but that's not our job.
Okay, so, right now, the, the, the number of trees and all that. What, where, so we want to put up a new building here. We attacked a detached structure. Right? So what's presented to us is, well, we want to put it here and there were trees there. How many trees are, are they allowed to put in this two bay, two bay, you know, footed type of garage?
How many trees are they allowed to remove?
Yeah.
Forty percent of the total volume of trees on the entire lot.
All right.
The Jones are saying that they've only, they only cut two trees to construct this structure. I, I really don't know if that's accurate or not. Yeah. I really don't know. Has anybody looked at past aerial photography or to see what the area looked like perhaps 10 years ago? I actually think we did, didn't, I, I'm pretty sure we did.
I'm not, I'm not certain.
I'm not certain we did, but I thought we did.
Yep.
Is there any way we can get aerial photographs back in that time, back then? Can we get that kind of information? And then we can have a better idea of what was there for tree.
George, you had, you had something to say?
Uh, yeah, um, first off, if we're going to request that, that should be a request of the applicant.
Correct.
The, probably the Soil Conservation Service has, uh, has aerial photography at one inch equals 500 feet. I just, I personally looked at past Google Earth satellite imagery and it's too imprecise to be counting stems, uh, much less determining, uh, volume. And I question even on a one inch equals 500 foot scale, uh, aerial photograph, whether you could do that. I mean, I have no doubt that that was heavily forested at one point in time before, prior to development. But there are aerial photographs available.
Reason I raised the issue, again, not being very familiar with the site, is that an aerial photograph might be able to tell you whether there were two trees that were there that needed to be cut or whether there were many more trees than two.
Well, that's a good point.
Yep. And that would be directed to the applicants to provide. Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to address Mr. Sargent's comment about hearsay, which suggested that he found Mr. Fuller more credible than Mr. Bean. It wasn't hearsay. Hearsay is when you tell someone what you heard from someone else. Mr. Fuller went out, looked at the site and has made some comments. Mr. Bean lives in the area. He has looked at the site. He made some comments. Mr. Sutton drives through that property every day. He made some comments. With all due respect to Mr. Fuller, all of those people testified about what they saw with their own eyes. And I hope you treat all testimony equally. Because it's, it's, it feels like. it's, it feels like you don't want to believe the neighbors, but you do want to believe Mr. Fuller. And that, I don't understand that.
Okay. Yeah, we have to move, move along here. Uh, I'm looking at the, the application, um, the Jones site plan, is it number three? And, uh, so switching gears a little bit, I'm thinking, I'm looking at the proposed, uh, septic area. And it looks like the corner of that is in the road. Does anybody else have that view?
They'd looked at that earlier last year. It's right on the edge of, edge of it.
Correct.
And I think that's what Mr. Sutton then required that the 30-foot line be shown, which would show it's definitely in the right way.
Okay, John?
We talked about that at considerable length at the last meeting that we attended. And the amount of overlap with the existing gravel at the edge of the road, uh, apparently, uh, accorded, when we got into the details of the septic, uh, plan, uh, it appeared to be a matter of inches. Apparently, some of the gravel that will be smoothed on top of, of that edge of the area of the septic will in fact mix with some of the gravel in the road. It, we may, the plans that were there, I think, made that fairly clear. Uh, the landowner, of course, the landowner of that section of the road is the Joneses. Uh, they can use the land for any purpose they want, as long as they don't interfere with, uh, travel on the road. Uh, the septic plan, I think, makes it perfectly clear that there would be no interference with travel on the road. But in an effort to try to eliminate even that little bit of overlap, uh, I asked if that could be changed. Could that be pulled back a little bit? I was told that it can't be, uh, and the reason is we're right up against a line where we would be too close to a neighboring well, uh, if we pulled it back. And that it couldn't be reoriented for reasons having something to do with the slope of the ground. Uh, and so I was told by the septic system designer, it, it really needed to be there and he couldn't shift it back. Uh, so that's, that was my effort to try to get it moved out. But as it's there, I think the plan shows that it simply does not interfere with the use of the road.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see.
Here?
Yes. Go ahead, George.
I just want to refresh my memory, um, by asking Gary a question. Gary, um, my recollection, I can't remember if it was at the very, the last meeting or the meeting prior to it, I, I think it must have been the last meeting because it was the, uh, wastewater system was redesigned in the interim. I believe you mentioned, maybe Craig, I can't, uh, I'm not positive that, uh, there is not an issue with the system failing as a result of traffic going over it as it is currently designed, that in fact, it's designed to withstand traffic on top of, vehicle traffic on top of it. Is that correct? Gary, you there?
The septic hasn't failed. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Did you hear my question?
Gary, you're muted if you are trying to respond.
What I said was the septic system has not failed. Just had to increase the sides to accommodate the new bedrooms above the garage.
Right. And my question had to do with the new proposed system and its location very close to possibly in the travel lane of the road uh, that Mr. Sutton has rights over, travel rights over. Uh, and my recollection of the discussion, and I thought it was a response you gave, um, uh, the system as it is designed can withstand vehicle traffic, traffic going over.
It can, it can.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, um.
Peter, Jack Sutton's question.
He does. Okay, Jack, go ahead.
Yes, to, to the point of the, of the road. I, as the adjoining property owner, would really like to see two states that are 30 feet apart that shows the termination of the road at our property line. Then we could all see what's going on and how it relates to the road and the access to our property.
Thank you, Jack. Okay. Um, moving along a little bit. Um, other issues, I know there are other butters or neighbors in the area who have been also had some opinions about it. The Stiffs have offered a memo. I want to make sure we address their concerns as well, best our ability. Mr. Stiff, are you there?
Peter, could you read his memo?
Peter, I am the Stiff's attorney.
Okay.
I submitted the memo.
All right.
And the earlier two memos, I know you have a list of open items, but I just want to point out a few more that are in my memo, so I can at least try. Um, the ordinance requires the applicant to have a permit for the septic system. That's in section 16C4. I have not seen a permit for the septic system.
I have issued the permit because the planning board asked me to do so before the next meeting.
Okay, well
I saw where it was sent to you by email, Chris. It was copied to you.
I issued the septic permit and I mailed, I mailed the permit to Mr. Jones.
I believe it's the Jones obligation to provide the planning board that permit and it's not in anything I have seen them file. I'm not saying they couldn't file it. I'm saying they haven't done it yet, that's all.
Well, in the, in the original packet, there was, there was the application for the permit and the planning board instructed me to actually issue it before they heard anything more about this. So I did. I issued it and I mailed it to Mr. Jones.
Mr. Fuller, I really don't want to debate with you. I think the planning board didn't see it.
Mr. Jones has his permit for the septic system in hand.
Okay, section 15B3 requires the applicant to provide federal flood plain information. He has not done that. Section 15B4 requires the applicant to provide lot coverage calculations. They have not done that. We've talked about tree cutting limits. Section 15S1 requires a written soil erosion and sediment control plan. That has not been provided. Section 15U requires a certified soils report by a state certified professional. And there is no soils report in the application. The list, in my opinion, is longer than three or four items. And that's been in writing since the first memo I sent you last November.
Yep. So thanks, Chris. Uh, George, did you have something?
Yeah, um, in the attachments I received from Nick for the revisions to this application, I'm pretty certain there was a, uh, copy of Gary's, uh, permit, uh, for the subsurface, the new subsurface wastewater disposal system.
There should have been.
There should have been, yes.
There was.
Well, maybe someone could point me to it. I've looked through all, both of their submissions and I haven't seen a permit. I've seen an application and all Mr. Jones has to do is give that to the planning board.
The planning board has it. Gary signed it before we commenced talking at the last meeting. It was handed, it was also re emailed to everybody with the notification of the, with the notification that this meeting would involve this project. Nick sent it out.
I have that, I have that package in front of me.
Copies of, copies of four documents, one of which was the signed permit from Gary Fuller.
Well, I'm sorry if I can't find it because I am looking at the package that came out with tonight's meeting, which was the same packet you submitted in February, and I see an application for a permit. And there's a place that says town use approved, disapproved. It's not there. I'm not saying Mr. Fuller hasn't issued it. I'm just saying it has to be in the planning board file and I haven't seen it yet.
That's fine, but it is. And the email that I got included one item labeled signed septic permit or words to that effect. And in fact, I, I printed it out before we started this meeting and have it right here. It's the permit signed by Gary. Well, I suppose you don't really care that it's, I've got it in my hand, but
There should be a perm, there should be a plumbing permit.
It was signed by Gary on February 25th. And this has been in the planning board's file since that date.
I feel comfortable that we have
Issues, if, if I, I'm sorry, Peter, maybe I should wait.
That's okay. I just wanted to say I feel comfortable that we have it. I just wanted to address that.
Okay. Some of the other issues, at one of, at a much earlier meeting, we were accused of not having given lot coverage information and it's printed right on the page of the site plan, signed by the surveyor saying he did the lot coverage calculations. And here we are again, being accused of not having supplied it. And we've already covered that point.
Uh, John, help me out. I'm looking at the plans. I'm not seeing lot coverage calculations.
Hold on.
When you submitted?
These are part of the plans that have been out since, I'm not sure what date. Was it February, before February?
I'm looking at the two plans that came out with the package tonight that was submitted.
On both of the plans, um, there are a set of notes on each plan. It's note four, the unvegetated area of the Jones lot, including the gravel road and drives, the buildings and the walks is equal to 9,312 square feet or 0.213 acres. And at the first meeting where we brought this up, one of the planning board members said, okay, that tells me what I want. He did a quick calculation with his calculator and written, determined that we were not over the set limit. The, the data is right there. That's the coverage amount.
So, okay, I don't want to argue with you. There's a percentage you're supposed to calculate.
It doesn't say that. It says you can't have more than a set percentage and we have to supply the information. That's the information that the surveyor supplied, from which anyone can easily see that the percentage is not higher than the, than the allowed percentage. There's nothing in the ordinance that says the percentage has to be stated. You just can't exceed the percentage.
So the lot is 1.231 acres? George, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I was the one that asked that question. Um, and, uh, 20% since the entire lot is in the shoreline zone and it's the amount of unvegetated, uh, area uh, within the shoreline zone that is at issue and whether that exceeds 20%, 20% of the total lot area is 10,728 square feet. Uh, there is 9,312 square feet of unvegetated area, a little bit less, about 1,000 square feet less. Just for the record.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I just make one last point? We can move on.
Sure.
Calculations do not include the construction of the septic system.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, Chris. I missed what you said.
Those calculations do not include the construction of the septic system, which is going to increase the lot coverage of impervious items.
When the septic system is installed and it's covered, they revegetate over the top. So I don't see how you can count that as unvegetated area. Only during the construction process.
Okay, listen, I, it, I don't understand why when I ask a question, Mr. Fuller, who's not on the planning board, or Mr. Cunningham, who is the applicant, doesn't answer it. It feels like Mr. Fuller is working for the Jones. That's just my comment on everything he says supports the Jones.
No, Mr. Fuller, Mr. Fuller does not work for the Jones. He is a, a of the town. He represents every taxpayer in the town.
All I am trying to say is they don't count septic systems as unvegetated area because when that septic system gets installed, it gets reveg, it gets loomed and it gets seeded and it gets revegetated over the top when it's complete.
I don't want to argue with your code officer. He knows more than I do.
So could we move on to another topic? Um, and this has to do with minimum lot, lot size. And what I'm looking at is, um, in the stiff planning board memo, um, Chris, I think you sent this. I'm on page two of four. It says minimum lot size. And there was, I made a note here, we talked about, um, the main Supreme Court recently addressed a very similar situation and you talked about uh, the requirement that for every 100 feet of shore frontage for every 300 gallons per day of wastewater is generated, and if use requires more than 300 gallons per day, the amount of necessary frontage becomes proportional to the wastewater generated.
And thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Rushton. I do want to note that the Jones, just yesterday or today, submitted a document from their scientist, which was very thorough. Um, and reminded me of an important point that I was not aware of when I wrote the memo. Namely, that the lot was created in 1969 and that law only applies to lots created after 1970.
Oh.
So without conceding the point, I really don't want to belabor it. I've made my argument. He's made his.
Hey, thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Cause I didn't know if we were gonna need to speak out a legal opinion, but it sounds like you've provided some good information.
I found what Mr., uh, what the Jones experts submitted to be persuasive on first review, without waiving the point.
Understood. Um, I do want to go back to page one. I'm sorry, I was a little out of order there. You had mentioned the new Jones structure is not permitted under the Belgrade Shoreland Zoning Ordinance, section 14, table of uses. Um, were you referring to principal structures or uses, one slash two family residential? This is table 115 dot A1?
I was referring to the fact that it is not a, um, accessory structure. I believe we have already discussed that at some length tonight.
We did.
And I don't think, I don't, we need to offer anything more on that point. In fact, as it relates to my memo, thank you for, uh, looking at it specifically. But I've tried to make in my oral comments, um, the essence of what's in that memo. I don't think there's any other important points that we need to discuss right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Principal structures or uses. Um, reason why I was looking at that and, and I won't stand this long. Reason why I was looking at that and, and I won't stand this long was I was wondering what a principal structure is. And in our definitions in our ordinance, it says a principal structure, a structure other than one which is used for purposes wholly incidental or accessory to the use of another structure of use on the same lot. That's what that art says.
Well, again, the ordinance does not allow two principal structures on this lot because it is, it's a non-conforming lot. There's not enough area even for one house. They cannot have two principal structures on this, on one lot.
Can you help point to where that says that? Forgive me because that was a question. I'm sorry.
I'm looking at principal structure. And I believe Mr. Cunningham made it very clear, the, the Jones believe they are applying for an accessory use. I asked that that be clarified. He clarified it. So I think you should review this as a accessory structure and not as a principal use. That's what they're applying for.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Hi, John. Go ahead.
It's okay. I'd just like to make the point that there's nothing terribly unusual about this. The Joneses have children and grandchildren who come to visit. When the family's all in attendance, they need more bedrooms. But it's still all one family, all there enjoying the property together. The new bedrooms up over the garage will be used by the one family. There's no way to use it for another family. It simply is, you might regard it as uh, an extension of their dwelling. Uh, that's how it will get used. Uh, when the family comes to visit, some of them will sleep there.
Thank you. Looking to other planning board members who might have some comments or questions for the applicant of this after the fact permission.
David Bean, I believe, has something, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had my, go ahead, David.
Thank you. Um, you know, just to dwell upon John's point, um, I do have a camp where I have extended family. It doesn't accommodate everybody. Um, so we have to share to accommodate, you know, people and the surroundings. Yep, there may be a weekend or two that people, everybody's there and we have a great time and that's great. But um, to, you know, for me on my property to do something on that property, to build a bigger structure like the Joneses have, and then try to backdoor it like they're trying to do right now is not right. And I think that's what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'm looking to other planning board members who have comments, questions, anything clarifying that could help us out.
Peter Sargent speaking. Now, this is among, uh, my question is to the other board members. How, how, what's the footprint of that garage with the cars that be, being parked in this accessory structure? What's, what's, what size is the garage where the car is going, the footprint?
So, in the application.
A thousand two, uh, two, 28 feet, square feet.
Alright, so it's, and, and feet, foot, so it's what, 12 by 24? 12 feet by 24? What is it?
28 by 28.
Pardon me?
I think it says 28 by 28.
That, that's, that's is what's going, it's the vacant spot there for two vehicles or one vehicle? I mean, how many vehicles and how many garage doors we got?
One.
One garage door. Alright. And then, and the inside of the build, and, and, and the plan, and the, and the plan is that there's be one car parked there?
Plan isn't very specific. It just says a garage with a laundry and a playroom.
Alright, and then, and there's one garage door there.
Yes, sir.
Alright, and it looks like it's 28 deep by what, 12, right? The garage door is eight feet wide, right?
Well, see that, it's probably more than that. It's probably 14.
14 feet wide?
I'm guessing, but it's, it's probably more than 12.
Alright, alright. So you got one, one vehicle uh, pop, going there, alright? And they can, they can, they can drive in this garage door and park a vehicle.
Yes.
Alright, so we got a garage. Alright.
Yes.
And, and then you got some rooms on the second floor?
Yes.
Beds, well, the beds up there?
There's three bedrooms upstairs.
Okay.
A full bathroom and a big playroom downstairs adjacent to the garage.
Alright.
But Peter, Peter, they did not get a permit for all that. They got a permit for a garage and a area to work in.
Well, they haven't got a permit yet. Well, that's what we're going to, looking at, we're looking at an application to get a permit. That's how we're looking at this.
Well, but actually they did get a permit.
How do you figure that?
They got a permit for a garage with a playroom.
As Gary was trying to say, they got a garage with a playroom and they built a bigger structure.
Uh, can I address Gary, please?
Sure.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Gary. Um, I may misunderstand this. Is the, I've heard, was there a permit issued for this accessory building?
For a garage with an attached playroom and a laundry facility. Yes.
Okay. Alright, and then they added on this little thing in the front going towards the lake.
Oh, a little patio, yep.
Yeah. But that was not part of the permit.
And they added three bedrooms and a bath, full bathroom upstairs.
So the original permit was, was for the, I, what, alright. Original permit for the second floor was what? What did the original permit say for the second?
There was no second floor shown on the original permit.
Alright, so you, how high is this building again now?
It's, it's within the restrictions. It's, it's not over what's allowed in height.
Yeah, so it's 16 feet, the pitch, you know, up the top of the roof, 16 feet of pavement?
No, I think it's more than 16, but yeah. It's, it's within what's required.
Right. So, so I'm trying to find out, though they got a permit, build the structure, what they put on the inside, you know, on second floor, you know, they, they didn't show that. Do we really care? I guess, do we really need to know that? When it went a permit, when they asked for a permit, do we need to really know what they're gonna put upstairs?
We do at this point because the original permit didn't show that, yes.
Oh, it's okay. So it, so it just showed an open, open ceiling all the way up?
It didn't show, Peter. It didn't even show. It just showed a garage, 28 by 28 garage with an attached playroom and an attached laundry.
Alright, so then.
And then when I went out to do an inspection, there was a second story on it with three bedrooms and a big, and a big master bath upstairs.
I don't see where that has anything to do with what we're discussing.
I do.
I'm asking the board. I kept the discussion going on with the boards.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
George, go ahead.
Just to reiterate your point that you made at the beginning of the meeting, Peter, we need to evaluate this application that's before us as proposed, as if it was, did not exist. Does it or does it not meet the standards of the ordinance? End of question.
That is it, right? Okay. Let's, let's move ahead. So that means that we're looking at this application as though nothing has been built. This is an after the fact permit. We're trying to address questions with this current application. Not being concerned for any activity that has occurred before. It's germane to certain conversations, but not to this particular application. Um, what other concerns, comments does the board have for the applicant at this time?
Peter?
Hi, George.
Hi. Um, we still haven't addressed whether or not, or gotten confirmation, whether or not on the site of the structure is within the 100 year floodplain.
Okay, good point.
You guys want me to go pull the map again, just to see if it falls in that?
I'm, I'm fine with that. If you can do that, Nick. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there with us. It's been a long night.
What time is it anyways? I lost track of time.
I, I think it might be tomorrow already, Pete.
No, it's 9:07.
Thank you.
You can't tell on the map.
So Craig, it's, it's not, we can't determine?
Correct.
Thank you for looking. So planning board members, we cannot determine if it's, if it is or if it is not within 100 year floodplain.
Peter?
Yes, Gary.
The maps are pretty vague. They're like painted with a wide paintbrush. And the only way to really determine if you're in, actually in the 100 year floodplain is to have a surveyor shoot an elevation of the lowest floor in relation to the elevation of the water, of the lake.
Gotcha. Okay. That, that is a question on, on, on the process of any application, knowing about the floodplain. Uh, how does the board feel about, about that particular item?
Well, the floodplain doesn't necessarily, if it's a piece of it, if it is by chance a piece of it in there, doesn't mean it is floodplain up by where the garage is, does it?
No. No. It does not. Oh, I guess I was thinking, we were wondering if the proposed area for the garage is in the floodplain. Was I mistaken?
No, that's what we're talking, I believe.
So if a piece, if a piece of that was within the floodplain, and we were going through a regular application process, we'd note that it is, right? I'm not saying it's a reason for denial, but it would be noted that it would be.
No, I was, I was talking about the whole property. So if a piece of the property down by the lake, which it looks like every, every place around us in the flood zone, all around the lake.
Yes.
So that doesn't, our garage is not in.
Right, you, you can only count the garage.
Right.
And in all honesty, that the, the floor of that garage is probably eight to 10 feet higher than the elevation of Long Pond.
Okay, thank you.
But if the board's not comfortable with that, then they certainly can require a surveyor to shoot an elevation and, and give you that info.
This is Peter Sargent speaking. So, uh, George, is that sort of, can't see a question a little bit? And to how high or this floodplain issue you got in the garage? Is it really a moot point for us or what?
Well, it seems that the town map isn't any more precise than the map I downloaded from the FEMA website.
They're not. They never are.
And so consequently, the, the FEMA website, you know, you put in uh, an address or you put in longitude, latitude and it gives you the location of a structure or whatever you're looking for relation, in relationship to the 100 foot, uh, to the 100 year floodplain. And I can't tell from that, from that map for sure that where the structure is is accurate and, or where the floodplain is in relationship to it. Uh, it's just not that precise. And um, and so, um, we're, you know, that's why I, I suggested we consult the town map. First off, that's the legal document by which we need to go by, not what I download off the internet.
Right.
What, what, what I would suggest is, I mean, you folks have seen this property. You've been to the garage. From the garage even down to the existing camp, there's a flight of stairs.
Right.
There's several stairs that go down to the camp, okay? So I'm sure that Long Pond is never gonna come up to that garage. Nor would it probably ever come up to the camp. But I can't document that because I'm not a surveyor.
So is there a definition about for the flood zone height?
You have to be one foot above the flood elevation of Long Pond.
So it's different for every pond?
No.
The flood elevation?
Your lowest floor has to be one foot above the flood elevation of the pond that you're dealing with.
Yeah, yes, that's what I'm asking. So.
That's on every pond, Craig.
So there's no definition of flood, um, flood level, the 100 year flood level is two feet above Long Pond? There's no definition like that?
No, it's one foot above.
The building has to be one foot above the flood zone, but I'm asking, what's the definition of a flood zone? How many feet above the wa, the water?
It's, it's, it's defined in your ordinance.
And it's a function of the slope of the land.
Correct.
If you have really flat land or minor tilt to it, it could be, you know, a greater horizontal distance.
Right.
The vertical distance is still the thing that, that Gary talked about. But if more, deeper incline, it would be a short.
You guys aren't really understanding my question. So you have the water level.
Yep.
What height is the top of the floodplain from the water level?
Going vertically, it's one foot.
It shows on your map. It shows on your map. Your map will say Long Pond, for instance, is 94 feet. Okay? And it'll tell you on that map that Nick just provided you what the base flood elevation is.
It's 241 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, from the, what I downloaded.
That's the base flood elevation?
Yeah.
So your building has to be one foot above that, your lowest floor.
Alright, so there's, there's no set definition. It's all different. Except for the one foot, you gotta be one foot. That's consistent.
That's correct. Correct.
Yep.
Pete, Peter, um, Jack has had his hand up. Couldn't you?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Jack.
I hate to say you're struggling with this. You're, you're taking a lot of time. I, I've, I've known that property at, next door to us down there for over 50 years. I think Gary Fuller is absolutely right. There's not a chance in hell that that's going to flood in 100 years. I think Gary Fuller is absolutely right. There's not a chance in hell that that's going to flood in 100 years.
No.
And if I can interrupt, I've been going out there for 50 years myself. And honestly, it, like Peter said, the bank goes down. And I've never seen it go up higher. And we're close because we're grandfathered in with our camp. And it's never come up. And I don't think the Joneses' property will have a floodplain issue. So I think this is really a moot point and you should move on.
Thank, thank you. Thanks. All right, planning board members, how are you feeling? Okay to move along?
Yes.
Okay.
Up until the point where you have to make a finding that this is not in the short, in the floodplain.
Okay. All right. What other comments, questions, concerns do we, does anybody have from the planning board to address this application as it relates to our shoreline zone ordinance? What's next?
My, my question is, I in improving this, considering this application, this we're going to approve the footprint of, we're going to approve what was approved before, right? Rather than this addition that's been, been added on going forward toward the lake. With weaken, we, am I, is, the way I look, for one thing, we, we, we don't want to have that little deck out there going towards a lake. I'm not, you know, right?
So I think what we're, Pete, what we're doing is we're acting on the application that's in front of us, which proposes to build a, a structure of the, whatever's on the plan, eight by 28 or whatever, with the single car garage, if you will, plus the numerous bedrooms and bathrooms. With.
Can I say something?
Yep.
The patio that Peter is talking about is still outside of the 100 foot setback.
Oh, it is?
Yes, it is.
All right. All right. That's important. That's a very important point.
Yep.
So it, so it can stay.
That's up to you folks, but it, it is outside the 100 foot setback.
It's outside the 100, okay, all right.
Peter?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm totally confused on the conversation we just had. We're just acting on what's in the application before us. It doesn't include anything with the original camp and its associated decks or, or patios. It does include a patio that's associated with the proposed structure.
Correct.
Yeah. So we should just ignore what, for our purposes tonight, whatever has happened or not happened at the existing camp.
Correct.
And just act on the application that we have before us.
Yep. Right. Okay.
Matter for Gary to deal with.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. What other concerns do we have or anything about this current application in front of us? Does anybody have anything?
I do, if nobody else does, Peter.
Yep, go ahead.
One thing that we would need to address yet is stormwater from the expanded driveway and building roof. That will need to be managed appropriately according with best management practices and so that's an issue that we can deal with as we have in else, other cases, if you wish.
Good point. All right. Any other concerns? So let me just air this out. So we had talked at length about a number of things that have been brought up, including one thing that has not been resolved, I, I believe, which is the number of trees cut in the last 10 years. Are we in agreement on that, planning board?
Yes.
I, I, I really don't have, I don't see why we have to go through this, but I'm just gonna go along and listen.
It was in the ordinance, Pete, I think was what we're talking about. I think it was page 47, number three, I think is where we're with that.
How come, well, the other application we've been doing over the years, we've never really run into this problem. What, I mean, because someone says there wasn't a lot of trees there and they were, you know, and the applicant says it wasn't, so, you know, so.
I, I don't know how to answer that, Pete, right now. I don't have anything for you. Every application's different. This is certainly a different one. Okay. Planning board, any other questions? All right, if no other questions, any other comments anywhere? Not seeing in the chat, anybody, anybody's hands up. At that, at this point, I'd entertain a motion on this application in front of us for an after the fact permit to be, to build a structure.
Peter?
George?
I have a procedural suggestion to make, and that is go through the findings that we have to make on page 66.
66, yep, good. So that's a great point because this is such an important topic. So on, in our ordinance, under, on page 66, this is under administration, 16, section 16D administration. D. There are eight points to, to review that we can review at any time. It says, "The applicant shall have the burden of proving that the proposed land activity in this is in conformity with the purposes and provisions of this ordinance. After the submission of a complete application to the planning board, the board shall approve an application or approve it with conditions if it makes a positive finding based on the information presented that the proposed use, one, and these are the findings of facts that will maintain safe and healthful conditions." So I'm asking the board now, findings of fact, and we should do a roll call on this. Does the, do the board members feel that, that the application as presented will maintain safe and, and healthful conditions? So start with Rich.
Rich, you need to unmute yourself.
Let me see, I can.
Every now? I say, I'm gonna abstain because I don't know enough about this project to feel comfortable voting on it.
Okay, Rich, thanks. Um, see, George?
I, I guess I vote in favor of it meeting that finding.
Okay. Pete?
I, I also vote in favor of that. Yeah, I say yes, yes.
And let's see, so Craig?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks. Um, on to the next item on page 66.
Pete, you need to vote too, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not vote. Yes, I would say it does.
Yeah.
Will, it will maintain. Number two, that it will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to waters. Rich, you're abstaining. Is that correct?
Yes, I just don't know enough about it.
Okay, George?
Uh, no, with, unless there's a condition that requires proper management of stormwater.
Okay. Craig?
Will not result in the water pollution. It will not with the condition of the stormwater.
Okay, so yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. Thank you. Pete Sargent?
Uh, will not with the condition about the stormwater like George talked about.
Okay. I would agree. We vote the same way. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Three, that it will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. Rich, you're abstaining. Uh, George?
I agree, it will.
Pete Sargent?
It will.
And Craig?
Okay, well.
And I would say that it will.
Peter?
Yep.
I, I object because it's dumping it on my property.
Thank you, Jack. George?
I, I, I want to amend my vote. I would say, no, unless there's a, a condition, and I can explain myself further in a moment if you want me to.
So is that on number two?
On number three.
On number three. So will the adequately, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater? So you'd say no unless there's a condition?
Yeah. Do you want me to explain?
Yep, please do.
The I, I guess depending on how this goes, I would probably be offering a condition that human occupancy of the proposed be, building be prohibited until such time as the wastewater system is fully constructed and operating.
Okay.
Because we, we've had testimony that the current system is inadequate to meet the needs of that, of the existing structure and the new structure back in February.
Okay.
Pete, Peter, a question, can I?
Pete Sargent, go ahead.
Yeah. George brought up a good point. I, I agree with George that no, conditioned upon what, what George has said. We, I, I agree with him.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just wondering if we could have maybe a slight modification to the condition. Would it be okay if they could sleep there as long as it wasn't connected to either the old, as long as it wasn't connected to the old septic system? So they, they wouldn't be able to use any plumbing facilities in the new building. But could they sleep there?
Um, can I weigh in?
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
It already is connected to the existing septic system.
Okay, so we'd have to undo it.
That's correct.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Thanks. So we went through, so Rich is abstaining, George has made a vote no with a condition. Peter said no with a condition. Craig?
I'll go no with a condition.
I would, I would also vote the same way. It seemed like a wise. Uh, number four. Uh, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. Uh, Rich, you're abstaining. Uh, George?
It, it will not have an adverse impact.
Thank you. Pete?
Will not.
Craig?
Will not.
I would vote that it will not have an adverse impact. Uh, number five, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. Rich is abstaining. George? Will conserve shore cover and visual.
I guess I'll go with, will, it will. And I'll let that's all you need to know for now. It will.
Yep. Pete Sargent?
It will.
Craig?
Will.
And I would say it will. Six, it will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. Rich is abstaining. George?
Will.
Pete?
It will.
Craig?
Will.
I guess I'm, I, I don't object as, as a matter of precision or something. I'm wondering if it's not applicable. I don't know. Just want to toss that out there. What does the board feel is? Do you think it? Is there any reason to, to go with not applicable, or should we just stick with it, that it will as it stated?
I think with the, we, we had the visual, we went down there and had a site visit and all that, so I, I don't have any feelings that it won't, so.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I can, I can, I can also say that it, it will. There's nothing for me to say that it will not.
Peter, are we talking about six or five?
Six. Sorry, six. That it will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan.
I personally could go either way. It, I mean, there are none of those listed, so not applicable is appropriate, I suppose.
How, how did the board members feel about that particular point? Strongly either way?
I could, I could go either way, as long as we just, you know, it's, it's either way myself, whatever you guys want to agree on.
Either way.
Okay, we're in agreement either way. We had originally voted will, but stick with that. We just made note that about it. Number seven, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. Uh, Rich is abstaining. George?
Um, based on the testimony we've heard tonight, I would go with will.
Okay. Thank you. Pete Sargent?
Read, read the question again. I'm sorry. Read that.
That the application will avoid problems associated with floodplain development.
It will.
Okay. Thank you. Craig?
Will.
And I would, I would also say will based on what we've heard tonight. And number eight, it is in conformance with the provisions of section 15 land use standards. Rich is abstaining. George?
Uh, no. So far, we don't have any information about whether it meets the clearing standard in section 15, section, subsection O.
Right. Um, so no. Next is Pete Sargent?
The, the clearing standards of the 40%? Who are you referring to?
Correct.
Correct. No. And Craig?
No.
And I would say no. Okay. So that last point is one that is an issue. Okay. That, this is that procedure for administering permits in our ordinance. Moving ahead. I would entertain a motion if one is willing to provide one.
This is Peter Sargent. I
Uh, this Peter Sergeant, I make a motion to deny the application.
Okay, there's been a, a motion on the floor to deny the application.
Peter, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I know the clock has been ticking in terms of the application review time and all that, um, but I, I don't, is there? A way that, uh, I, I, I guess my question is for Mr. Cunningham, uh, does he feel like he can provide us with more, uh? More definitive information about to meet the standard? And if so, whether we should, uh, delay the application for this single item, uh, yet again?
Mr. Jim?
Go ahead.
Yes, I think we can, uh, particularly since. I guess what we would do is have a forester out to count the trees that are there, uh, and talk about. It, what, I don't know that they can find every stump that ever may have existed. But what we can do is figure out whether the clearing could possibly have exceeded the forty percent, uh, limit. And if we can get you a report that shows we're on the right side of the line. Or maybe we provide it to the code enforcement officer to let him check it against the requirements. Perhaps that could be a condition.
I don't know. Go ahead, George.
Um, all right, that's something I would rather not handle as a condition. I'd rather have it as part of the application in hand.
Same. Feel that way. Um, so we have, can we get back to the motion on the floor? And do we have a second to deny this application? Which is abstaining.
Procedurally, were you looking for a way to? Not have to restart the whole process? Perhaps you would? Table your vote, giving us a chance to come back to you with that report to add into the application?
I don't want to speak for George.
That's what I was hinting at, yes. But only if, you know. This just doesn't keep on going on and on.
Right. Great. So, uh, Chris Nagle, go ahead.
Well. I respect the time you're giving the applicant. I'd like to point out simply that since the February meeting, when a number of requests were made, the applicant has provided nothing. And, um, he filed this application back in November, and it's June. Yeah, and I believe the board already voted tonight. That the application did not meet. Standard number eight. So that vote is there, done. I'm not sure what else you can do now, except to deny the application and ask him to resubmit it if they want to.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so planning board members, we've heard some, um, some opinions. And we have a motion on the floor that is to deny the application. Do we have a second? No second on the motion. That's interesting. Okay. With no second, that motion can't go forward. So George has brought up my ideas. Potentially. How do we want to approach that then? Go ahead, George.
I guess I would ask both Mr. Nagle and Mr. Cunningham their thoughts on why we. Yes, we ha- have determined that the current application before us doesn't meet the findings of the ordinance that we need to make. At this point in time, but why we can't table, uh, as a legal matter until we have additional information, revisit that finding. Uh, see where we're at and then proceed from there as to whether or not to approve, uh, approve with conditions or deny the application. I, I don't see anything in the ordinance prevents us from doing that.
Right. Good point. Chris, go ahead.
Um, again, you've already made a finding. It doesn't meet. The review standards. Period. You made that finding. I don't think you can then decide because you don't like what that finding leads to, that you can decide to table it. And again, the reason we're sitting here eight months later is because the applicant has not met his burden. And I, I, listen, I'm all about giving people second chances, but this would be the third or fourth chance. And at some point, I think the planning board needs to decide this meets the application or it doesn't. And again, you've already decided it doesn't. So. What you do after that, it really is up to you.
Okay, thank you, John.
As I understand procedure, you have the power to. Hold off your vote, table it however you want to phrase that. Uh, and then revisit the issue. Uh, at, at a future meeting, presumably. Assume meeting. It, it's up to you. Obviously, we would prefer to do that. Uh, and think it would save time for both sides, for you as well as for the parties.
Yep. Okay. How do the other board members feel, um, you know? About this? Craig?
Table it.
What's that?
Table it.
Table it? Okay, and, uh. I'm not hearing Pete. Hello? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm waiting for a motion.
Yeah, the motion did not get, get a second.
I know that, so I'm waiting for another motion. I, I kind of, the consensus, I can't, hearing over the table, let's have, let's have, you know, let's have a motion.
Uh, George, go ahead.
Um, Peter's probably correct. Um, I'll make a motion to, uh. Table the application. When I'm struggling with it, I, I'd like to put a timeframe on it. For no more than, um, thirty days.
I, I say in three months, thirty days?
Thirty days. No, uh, table the, uh, applica- well, let me ask. Might be harder to find a barster available under current conditions. Sorry for thinking out loud, um. Table the application for. Um. Sixty days. For the sole purpose of, um. Providing additional, providing information about. Meeting the clearing standard of the ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table the application, looking at sixty days. John, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, could, could we just rephrase that sixty days to be your second meeting two months from now? Which might not be, I mean, that might be sixty-one days. I mean, I just want to get, it obviously has to coincide with your meeting schedule.
Right. I, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so, um.
See.
So that would be the second meeting of August.
Right.
And right.
Longer than that.
And the second, uh, the third Thursday in August, which is our second meeting that month, is August twentieth.
Let me amend my, uh. My, uh, motion to, uh. Some, uh, table the application until August twentieth, you said, Peter?
Correct.
Uh. Purpose of, uh, providing more, providing more information, providing information. About compliance with the clearing standard of the ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second? Um, any more discussion on this?
No.
No. All those in favor, and we'll do a roll call vote. Rich, you're abstaining, is that correct?
Correct.
George?
Yay.
Hey, uh, Pete?
Yeah.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
And I will vote yes in favor of tabling. Um, and that is where we stand on that. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all for taking the time. You're obviously doing a very thorough job, and the STFs appreciate it.
We are trying.
Thank you for your wonderful patience.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Planning board members, um, do we want to do the LaRue, uh, permit tonight? It's in front of us.
Be pretty simple, isn't it?
Let us hope so.
Planning board, I'd just like to say thank you too. I appreciate your time, your commitment, and trying to do the best you can.
Thank you, David.
I, I know it's hard at times, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
David, thank you. Enjoy, enjoy your weekend, right?
You as well. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so, planning board, do we have the LaRue PDF?
I do.
Okay, great. I do too. And, uh, that has the highlighted, if I'm not mistaken, the highlighted, uh, calculations that have occurred, correct?
Yes.
So in, in the note that comes from the LaRue, I mean, and let me just double check. Are we all okay to do this? It shouldn't take that long.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, thanks. Um. So we have the, the PDF from the LaRues, which, which looked at their calculations. It says, uh, Nick, thank you for your call, uh, for advising us that a request for the deck permit has, has been tabled and need to, of clarification, two points. We have recalculated the lot square footage totaling fifteen, three, seven, five square feet, divided that by forty-three, five, sixty, which is an acre. And the lot, total lot should be point three, five, two acre per correct calculation. Also, please note that the proposed ten by eleven and a half raised deck. Is where the existing stairs and platform exist, is over a non-vegetative area consisting of gravel, stepping stones and builders, uh, boulders, I'm sorry. And then, so. Getting back to this application. Um, because that was one of our concerns, right, was about lot coverage, and, and this calculation, I think, addressed that particular issue. Were there any other, um. Issues at hand with that?
Think they're the only ones that I know of.
Same here.
Okay, that was the only one that I recall. Um, so. Does this address that, that would allow us to vote in favor of approving the application as it is presented in front of us today? I.
Yes.
Yes, it's just both, you know, now it's below twenty percent coverage.
Right, which is, which is good, right? Which is, that's where it should be. Um. I did drive down by this site, um, to take a look at it. And I agree, just by looking, and I didn't do a site visit, I just drove by. And I could see how, what they talked about the deck being over a non-vegetative area already, consisting of gravel, it's very obvious that it is, so. I trust what, what that is. Having said that, are we ready to vote on this?
I make a motion that we, uh, vote to approve the, uh, application as. Updated.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion on this issue? All those in favor, we'll do a roll call. Rich?
Yes.
Pete? Yes. George?
Yes.
That I couldn't hear you.
Who are you talking to?
You, sir.
Oh, yes.
And I will, I will vote yes. And I'm vot- voting yes, so, uh, that is approved. All in favor, none opposed. Um. Can we, can we call it now, you guys, for the night?
Uncle.
It's been a marathon night. Want to thank you all for your, your service to the. This has been extraordinary, long night. It's been. For me, one of those not very pleasant nights necessarily, so.
I'm sorry to point out that we can't talk about the subdivision ordinance now.
Pete, I just want to say that you did a fantastic job of cheering this, uh. Meeting tonight. It was a difficult, very difficult, and you did a great job.
Thanks, Pete. Thank you very much. Uh, and I, I, I look to all of you for, for what you bring to the table on this too, so. It's, uh, it's, we're in it together, right, so. Um, Nick, do you have any updates for us?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Gary, is he gone? He might be.
No, I'm still here.
Oh, my God, man, you've been a saint.
I have one update.
Okay, what do you got?
Good night.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, let's, let's call it a wrap. I've got nine fifty-one. Um, thank you. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Yep. Good night all.
Bye. Hey, Nick, I got a question. Nick there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Hey, when can I come and vote? When can I come down and vote?
Uh, tomorrow.
In the booth? That's the first, first time I can do it?
Yeah, yeah, we have ballots here, so anytime now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.